N'iswa ipri tchana so Yesu Dosi, silele na china, isamorayo Ude na uruka si tchama za Yesu Udele sele twa le ma sele Use uruke, use uruke si tchama sa Yesu Si tchama sa, Santa Africa, Santa Africa N'idi zonwa monsehirwa, edi kile vongonzi Uzele kwa vebadus, bari konsera hafurbi Santa all to come together And united we shall stand Let us live as our fathers Diya funela kango ni vwe Otoa di di kumba e liya liya suti saniri Uwenzelba, umoya, upepezele N'idi auzonke, otoa kemi shambu, baliya bapaza misa banalwalala Ubaliko ni liliri ya Engos Getheba lobaba akuhoho Chuu, afanga pantu kani line, yaba lobaba fungele Silapa kibasa nana mchlanje? E alfrendzo? Diya funu kwa zba ikona imatatiela, apa se ifigil? Apaga fik Paseza? Okay, basa sfumana nje kama nje Sina warza ukala benge kokotoa kondo sanga yezza I'm in zana ikona? Chiko, feridisiriyas Andiwa? Senchili Alright N'atinga bisazidizinkin, sponazo Alright, ubanu manepenla kama nje kanga kato Oh yo, mumelu sokuza pete fide, nso satisi sawe Ngadwe ikona yonkele Alright Ononcha lo, ncheba benge ngoba kona?
The social workers of the region are present
N'izayichonla kancha, n'ikilele konin Masai le batacho lizdulo, eza pana Ungu abo ap Ikona udu omelela kanele, la kwasasa, kawo ruzande Usasa? Mama, diya rufo ne luta tumacheba, utuzi menga abo ap Di betwe inetweki, apa, sofne kufumi Ikona ikona itwa, the network is Duelani apa kwe kala langa Fungelani banya bangikafi bes Asuzu kala langa Ipisho ikona ap? Ayesele jibonana ikona nalimuri Eh, inaki, uchete ni sheliule ndawale, sopa fazamisabala Bega nap, apa kama nje? Misi, ormem? Misi Uba uchete kati, uka bio mem, maybe ya xulele mem Okay, we have a season of happiness And who need to tell them that's the point Alright Engos, siya funela bando bachala N'idi saka lula, ndi khasula, ndiyo yo baku chete zilapa Silapa, ok
You're explaining it to why are we here?
Ok, laga n'ungu ndi lilele, umtunbo mto liko
Because nowadays life have changed
N'izauzichonini nanguwe Etina bando batala panga bayakumezek
You will tell us, because we are already noticed that the elderly are being abused
Bakona ge, okabamenda bana abo, ndi klingba Pamkwa siamkelewe, apekaya sikululebe baki Masina ziso ba singoba ni baki
I am accompanied by my colleagues here in front with me Before we are welcomed and take off our jackets I think it's proper for us to introduce ourselves
Sina yoi tim e paanzi, yesu, kaka parlamentesuka Ikanjele la bando to liko, na bandu, the sign language Eh, esituni ndoba, jongu basivela, nba mayenge kucheto Lendo yo kupieza, sithetangiza Siba understande, na boba kona
We do have delicate staff from parliament who are assisting us with adaptation Including those of the sign language which has been approved or signed as an official language
Ikamalam, ikamalam lenko N'ongosi mvanana, ispo, mvanana is name
My first name is N'ongosi, the same name is Mvana
N'ngai tebebe tana ninga tinidi unomvana, kati se case
Please don't refer to me as N'omvana like the people of the case at hand
They call me N'omvana, gos, but you say name ya mgos
But this is by N'omvana gos
Manbe, ndingu N'ongosi ikam
My first name is N'ongosi
Is name, Mvana, M-V-A-N-A
And the same name is Mvana
As I spelled it
Ndisuka le, quintabasei u
I'm from the area of Whittlesey
Everettlis
Whittlesey
Ndi ye ndathongwa, nipaka misizankla, nani klenkingo, nisiti masiambi, so nimele parlamenta ekapa
I've been appointed and you were part of those people who lifted up their hands To send me to parliament to represent you
Wa fika ke ekapa, na vavwa, ngeskunkla, sokokele, i komitia kwa social development
And in Cape Town, I was offered the position of leading this portfolio for social development
Londo geni boda, indi mo pete umboko, nesneye izdusoni peki, zesa ukupeke, zesa zisa Dingu mamcha we, and isarungu, kusibebe tu, du mamcha we, ka ucha umo, togo, ingo sarazan
That is why I'm holding this mic and talking to you But I do have my colleagues there who are on that remember Who will introduce themselves, I'm from the Chaweklen
I'm happy we do Eh, nidi masmane
Chi, kumtholokas
Ay, sute nte nte sa, kikumtholokas okavi, opile kete Diya, uphosa nana, na ikona? Utinama na, unayo ipma le pankini Munema le pankini ndiashale makusbe Alright
Mulweni, my name is Alexandra Abrams I'm a member of the Portfolio Committee on Social Development And I'm representing the Western Cape Province
Potani, ndingu Alexandra Abrams Di lulu ngulale komiti oputle solose ntsalo N'isuka ku impuma koloni, ndi mele yona, impuma inchona koloni, ndi mele yona
Thank you very much for your attendance here today, engos
Engosika kulu, ngokuza, kusisi, masalo, msi tuwa namchlanje
Sanbonani Lika ma ngusitembe, lenwa kamllo ngongo, ngitka mwa, impuma langa province And I am a member of the Portfolio Committee on Social Development
Happily singled, bakona masloka apa
Good morning, my name is Bridget Masango I'm also the member of the Portfolio Committee on Social Development I'm looking forward to the engagements today, thanks
Potani, mnatingo, Bridget Masango, ndi lulu ngulale komiti Ansa kwa snosu bamba, ukula ngazelela, ukuniva namchlanje
Jumalan, my name is Paul Nita Marie And I'm from the Free State Province And I'm also in this committee on social development I want to say welcome to all of you You are looking beautiful early in this morning And I hope you can have a fruitful day, thank you
Potani, ndingu Paul Nita Marie, ndisuka kipondola se Free State Ndi lulu ngulale komiti oputle solose ntsalo Ndi siti namkelekele, kwake, nikangeleka, nibale Ndi kwa snosu bamba, ukula ngazelela, ukufama suin
Engosika kulu, nao, nde yansaka yomanji nishyebele Bapo tata balapa abangi na makuskas, abasfunisitem, abasfunisitem Ba funu babotu anje Baba manye amakabane, anga, basholo, na, babonke, ba emte zanki Except this one, lo no go, u abautu Okay, masazi seke, iptimesamba na yo Pa kula kona, ipanga semian, gosinetim, yaba, futo, abatwetezayo Basuka epa parliamente, kwanu ngulusu kana bole, kani wewi sebe tunan
Let me introduce the team that is supporting the committee These are the administrators from parliament
Yeah, ubani basile, onyana be, nuni akposwa Most ya bobonke, abana antwe zanki, nibaseka nyengos, kanbanre Okay, betuna Ma, n'tinichebele nyindo Ukoo itivi apa Ni ya fotu, anje kwa nishela
Let me share you something
Kani kupi lipsticks zenepukuza, nizipukuza msiya
You are on TV as you are seated there
Jongu, wacho watati peki ya ku mama Wacho watati peki ya ku mama So you must always smile, nibe bale If uno nyana osenchi, noga nyindo ombe senchi, ne kwa zutwapiyese zando Itima ivunu YouTube, uku, uza kbona ba, nyano kumeti vi namchlanje we
If you have children at home, who are at home You can call them and tell them to watch Youtubes or so forth
Or Twitter
Or Twitter
Yeah, they will see you, they basa n'ibo na bai N'ansige nyitimesamba na yo Benifile moskabe kutulu no matoto, lindo kna yingati ya bapitisale, maskanda wabo, maskanda Kani paka misizankla, let me see, kuleleka maskanga
This is the other team that was assisting us with the creation of the national anthem
Leke ye TV, n'ansi ipisi faki zedok, pa jonga ngokuwe
You see the TV was having their headphones They are looking directly to you
Nani ngapo, uni chongi So akomdo ngachonga ngape ule songi Sine kiza, le ababense ti, bayasneti sa, koluwi miloe shumi, elnesbi ni Esisandu n'pasi sangoku, is sign language, ma ba, wewi shenje, omneye wabo na kweva kwe tu
That is assisting us with the adaptation of sign language, they are
Sinalo ne kiza lo kusele kobe tunan Si kuseleke pambili nangemva, ba jonga, ndoba, uba uya po ka apa
Oh, Ngenanowa. Makangene unowa, makangene. Oh, Ngenanowa. Oku Bela. Wapabiza bonku noa. Wapakeringana we. Oh, Ngenanowa. Pezulu, Ngena Alfredo, pezulu. Panzi ngosukumezo, labandwa bango mama batala nabandwa na panzi. Eh, ifakele kwaya, adwazlo wa nibonelondo. Keni shukumisikaz, ngoslo bo nenzimitabo ngayo kwezinda unikus. Ya, sisa mano uli inja ngikulo. Abandwa besayo, igmatatyeela niempinzana. Kotwa ke, umama, uza osamkeela. Mama uyayitanda lengo, mngani ufuna batiabele injonga ya. Sankasale asukun. Okay. Ngaxange ngoknijongaya kwa ke gausa. Siya mke luwa ke ngu.
Ma, dibulise. Dibulise kuipalamente. Dibulise kuipalamente. Dibulise kubobonga bandwa balapa. Eh, ndingundo nde kaya ikama. Dingusandi le ifany. Di kokele isizwe samazibula. Kwanuika, kwanuika, ke keshawo.
Chili.
Chawegas.
Ah, da de.
Ondo gas.
Yes.
Umafungwa she wobukumka nibaye nyanda. Ni kandondele, kwanamasi. Ndililungule, juyengus national. Eh, bakona ke, abandu endi ambanaa, bo, iofficials endi ambanasu. Tinga tewela nepaka mekanu.
Zazisemam. Azis.
Di tewela baphaga, bako ba, adizwa znamu.
Nifunuzo uzazis?
Nifunuzo uzazis. Awa nyeni, ni kantate. Kolo shoboli.
Ay, mi geni maile, tingasamba nomona. Good morning, Molweni Kanen. Oh, okay. Molweni, ndi wufyo gazii kobina.
I'm fyo gazii kobina.
Semtata.
From Mthata.
Kotwa ke ngokukalea ngandise Pretoria.
But I'm working in Pretoria.
Kulantu, gathradishna, kuladepartment gathradishna affairs.
In the department of traditional affairs.
Ingosi ya, ingosi zetu siskapile because zin cosi, ezo nyulue gui provinces. But zayomma ku national, zayomeli provinces zazo ku national. So, uingosi sandile, umele ieastern cape kaya ku national.
We are there to accompany our ingoses, who are there to represent their provinces at national level. And ingosi sandile is representing the eastern cape at national level.
Ingos.
Good morning, all, and all protocol observed.
Ma, Kanenzi bazayo.
My name is Monika Mutivi. I'm with the National House of Traditional Leaders. I'm the legal advisor for traditional leaders.
Ngena kentengoni ka Mutivi, ndipaya kwekebele, le ngosi ikunlungulu, ndingumtebisiewezo Mtheeto kulantu, yengosi.
Eh, oku ban. Diavuyatagukho undu omama. Oh uvuyela yo, untrimbi wobukosino ukasaka ku, lugbe kunzima kaku, lugutitina bandwa bango ma.
Firstly, I'm happy that there's a woman who understands and supports the issue of traditional leadership, especially when it involves women.
Begunzima kaku, luguba, beguti kumdomama, ongumshologazi, onomduana, oh, ongumfana, egufana lubunge nenda we.
It was very difficult for us if you are a widow and you have a son who's very young. And you, as a widow, you are not allowed to take over. And then they'll say the younger brother of your late husband should take the reign.
Utadomnuike. Utadomnuike ishla lo asifutumeze, kwanoboom. Anga funusu kenda weni.
And then the uncle, who is the young brother of my late, of the late husband, would want to, to hold, to keep holding the seat without releasing it.
Anga uinabo bandwa nabomta kwa bo ke pufu.
And he would not even take care of the children of his elder brother.
Sapi ndasa vumele kwa man di si, si si females natimandomba zana, kuba ke anchadanga. Kotwa, anko available?
And then we were allowed, we as women, and even the daughters, as you can see, I'm single, but I'm not available.
Kotwa ke kunjalo, akuka vi kolulanga.
Be that as it may, still things are not as easy as one would think.
Kotwa kesnetemba, isindo, zesa one bezilungi.
But we do hope that at the long run, everything will be in order.
Eh, eyo nando bende tewela, luka, uyeke njubandi bende siswesimbe, bende tewela luna mke.
But mine was just to welcome you, just let alone that I got taken away.
Eh, bandwa batala, namshlanje ukhulume ndonalu pamku.
To you, the elderly, today, here is the government in front of you.
Luzile, lusele, kuba lu yesindo ba, be paya nange, baphanga ati, jenbasila panji.
Government came down to you because they know very well that the reason why they are in those positions is because of us.
Kunge koka ne, nyidwa bana uzabai kobe, tena kangebeze ilundu.
There's nothing that they can conclude without having approached you or coming to the people.
Di afuna ke bandwa batala, indoba, ishla desmundo, inasozinlizi, indo kuba, ninghuhulumeende.
I do want to emphasize to you elderly people, you must always bear in mind that you are the government.
Singa bata taseba beke ezishla lo inikotwa, bazawutize basenze, bao bo neno sebezuwa, boba nyeti sugwasi.
We can appoint them and put them into positions, but for them to do their work or to succeed in doing their work, we are the people who need to support them.
Kotwa ke, iattendence, ndinetemba, kuba ke ukseko abesa yo, iattendence, noko, noko. Egufanele wa nipumeka ngoko, kuba, lamak, lamak, aysha anje, ayongo matasha asoloko ekona. So, balufigile, inga sesilusedi, tisega ku.
Yes, the attendance, I hope some more people are coming, but I feel that we needed to be even more. Because it's not every day that we get these opportunities. And when these opportunities avail themselves, we need to put good use, to make good use of them.
Kuzwe kuni ke ngakasana bandwa batala.
They came particularly, especially for you, elderly.
Ngomtheeto ngala le kunimba.
About the legislation that has a direct impact with you.
Egufune kindo obanisa, me uku mamela kaku hle, nifakele apo kufanele wa kuya fakele wakon.
Which you have to listen to and suggest or make inputs where you have to.
Ni krebise apo, ni bonba, ni faneleba, ninga krebisa kona.
And advise where you have to.
Ningoyiki anizu bandwa, ningoyiki.
Don't be scared.
Umto londo a ifike ku ye akon ba, ifaneleki, kulumtheeto, eza uti inilumsenele, inenze, nani ni be kantate.
Don't be afraid to make your input. If there's anything that you think you need to echo, say it without fear or favor in order to get some kind of assistance.
Siyayazu ke, uva ke, abandwa batala, angabandu mosu be project, naidodo. Umduza uti kuba, uza be kumtheeto, kustha ngomtheeto, ike kamaleti umtheeto.
I know.
Oh, ike kwa uka gaminisakwa, ndo efikile yo, entisweni yanki.
I know the elderly are involved in projects, but now because we talk about the legislation, some people might be afraid just to hear the word that has to do with legislation or law. And they would be afraid to talk, and yet they are allowed to be free to talk.
Ango iki umdomtala, noba utetile ngalondo atetenga yo, nditzenba, jenbaku lapanjia. Zikona, abakona, abandu, abazauti, but kwezo, kwezo zimboni zifisleyo, zibe, kwen go, kwen ndauzazu, ziza usiwango, kwen mi nyango, yazu.
I wish that the elderly should not be afraid to talk. You should echo and voice out whatever you need to share with this gathering. And we do have people who would pick up everything, and whatever you raise, they would channel it to the right door or to the right relevant department or direction.
Ngaloma sugendia, mke la woku, ndo olapanga parachi.
In those few words, I welcome everybody inside here.
Sitinma ukhulue ibachi, kotwa ke, teabanda banga parate.
Please take off your jacket also, but I understand it's cold inside here, but be free, you can take it off if you feel like. I thank you.
Uman kasi benamshlanje. And it, and it. Ay, emachawe, nke, onga phakati, li chawe, umamchawe. Ni na niavuma, umtaba umamchawe, makosibe. Ay, betun, chega dindia zalana.
I have a relative here.
Wa iseni ngasandile, kuse kaya.
And even the same name of Sandile, I know that's my family.
Tinichebe lindo? Tinichebe? Kinto umbiza semachawe, ne asfunes chati.
The daughters from Amacha where don't always get married.
Ah, so tu kanga, ndoi lonto yakaitetan.
So we are not shocked or surprised with what she has raised.
Ay, chem, na dabane, lakide, ofmani feiva, kula mie, nuamo wa kwamfan.
I was just lucky to get a favor from the hus, my late husband, from the.
Siyabulela, ingosi siyabulela, futu ya bonaka alba ukunruku, ukelu addresses shwele.
And we can hear that you are from the National House, you are used to address gatherings. And even your speech.
Siyabulela, betunana ngamso. Siyehela ke, ngensans, betunakutwa maskululechezine, pa kisisbeke panzi, so we are already welcomed by ungos. Eh.
We share in doing our duty here in this table.
So, uklenge, oza bango, mologaza na we, tunkwezi nyanga na.
A small one who's going to be our in-law in a few months' time is the one who's going to address you about why are you here today.
Daughter in-law. Masangshu daughter, it might be, son in-law. Na kuge ukenjenje ke, betunani, siyavana indoba, indata ezilanguagesenins, uza usomla, kwa sesi lungin. Ata ukubushomla, kwa sesi lungin, atoli kutata, kwa sesinwin, kuba sifuna apa nimke, ni vileba kwen sekantoni, ketwangani.
As we have many languages here, she will present in English, and after that it will be interpreted because we want you to understand what is this bill about.
Ni anfumela, sekube noba imatatyeela yu.
Me to proceed here, even if Matatyal is not here.
Baza stola kambili ne.
They'll find us along the way.
Okay. Kasiku iba uku mamela, umama, eskatusela, lendo aspatile yo na, ngoba kaluku, sisi tomelo, Mtheeto lendo sizen ga yo apu.
After having listened to what she will be presenting to us, because we are coming, we are here about an amendment bill.
Ni na ni fuma na ezinaki, nifuna umtheeto ukhulungo, ngoba kaluku, na tingo nineteen ninety-four, wongkumduya kula ulanani, ninghuhulumeende, jebalshela apu.
You, as you are faced with these challenges, you wanted this amendment, as you indicated in nineteen ninety-four, that people will govern. That is why you are here.
Nizawbizwa, nize glombo ko ulapanga pambili, kuba ni phakamise izanja, nifuna ukuti, siyayikasa le pile, okanya, uka ba awuvumelani, na yo, uyichoi balala, uka le uzitaza wen na.
Support the bill or not, or you don't support the bill, and then you can indicate what you think needs to be added in this amendment bill.
Umduwa kwa sasa sefikile mama.
Somebody from Sasa here already?
All right. Kotwa, onunchalo, ebene, noba konna apanga pambili, uka ba imaki, ifuna bona, ipeyi ya kau ifumananga, betun, ngazo mapanga pambilutandi ifumananga, uzengo, onunchalo wa nengi. Kuba uza uti kakupu, onunchalo bezza utola tolazongezindo, basitaleba batini, gezinaki, zenuzrezleyo, nokunga fumanwa kipeyi, iye ya peka ati, asitaze lengo, ata ukubakubise, kwezinyezinaki, esizazi ba, zinkuluka ku luke lal, so untrimbi opkai, okanya, oma nyuknyesi, noku ya lungele, kuba, unga uteti apa, embo kweni, kube lali, basamkelela lamfo, ukuba yongo konsayo, lukese kataswi, uza uyabla tafile, usebeze pa, ubiza makamako yo, ngito kaka ya, utazi ngaki, ottingba ma uneti sweku yo, kwezisikano, sisa unikesela ke, abandu, bazenga pambila, uzufelupa gamu xalepa ngapambi, futu ke betunani, kube kort kanga ngogo na, utechamhamtui, nanzindwenisile, unga bulisi, bulise opisho, bubulsa be fundis, bubulso tata, bomchanda zonendo bi, sesbulsiu wengo, ingosi samkele, usbulsile, panele, ngene mtenbi, ngeka malako, nenki, ngosuka ku yo, na lendo funuitet, siyabulela ke, ngokunjanikesela ke, ukwenzela smamele kapheke ngu, sijonge naplemi kulua nasipetehi palu, ngesinto, forukwani kwazi, uku ifunde lwa ngonya, ne makaya nindu, over to you, Honore Prer. Abrams, Alexandria.
Your social workers are here in front. If you have a challenge of your passion that your daughter received, you can go directly to them, you don't need to say that on the mic. And issues that are very delicate or sensitive, you don't need to mention them on the mic, you need to go to the table and whisper to the officials and proper, and give proper details. Maybe you might be ashamed to say them in the mic, so those delicate issues must be taken to the table. And the documents in your hand are written in vernacular language, you can give your children to read them out to you. Over to you, Reverend Abrams.
Thank you, Chairperson. So, we are busy amending the older persons ball, which is a two thousand and six ball, and we are currently in twenty twenty-three, so amendments must take place.
Eh, silapake ngokuzo shomela, umtheeto abandwa batala, owa upunya zengo two thousand and six, ngoku klo nyaka, sisa ne shomelo, ngalo nyaka ka twenty twenty-three, utukutino ko iminyaka, iambile, ubo mbango two thousand and six, nobaga twenty twenty-three, abusafani, kungoko ke kumeleze, kilu kutikubeko kusomela, ukwenzegay.
So the gaps at the ball, the amendment ball will fill in as follows. Number one, better coordination between government departments. For example, there is the Department of Social Development, there is the Department of Health, there is the Department of Police, and all of them need to work together in order to serve you.
Ukuvala ke, misans, ekoryo namajala, paketekle, ke glomtheeto, umiyonge stetangi, eh, kukoke, uku, ukupursi swakoku, kwen sebezi swano, phakati kuama sebeka fulmede, ati benayongo, kukunikesela, yongo zoku, bandabatala, umzekelo, ama sebe, anikesela, yongo zoku, bandabatala, afana ne sebe lupursolozinhlalo, isebele zimpilo, namanya ama sebe jalonjal, kufuneke, abenelela, elukuli ma, yokussebezi sala, ukusiseni, ezo ngongo zoke, kubanda batala.
The second one is, you've been on this earth a lot longer than I have, than your children have, than your grandchildren have, so you have knowledge and wisdom and experience that must be passed down to the younger generation so we can learn from you, so the ball is including that too.
Eh, wesbi, numba, tinga upe, ndia ukato sa ngokuti, jengba, nenga bandabatala, nifeli apanchi, neneminyaka, minizi, kakulu, nikuleka, dakunam, utukutina sebumeni, nenamava akati, slayo, kunamava, ndinavo, muna, abandwa nabenu, nabazu kulua nabenu, londu, ketukutikunizi, ekuno ufulwa kune, kokama vawenu, ne zakono, enite na tulagoo zo, kanya, ne, 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 namachadi mio ka bobo, bente na tulagoo, nalayo, indo ke, lomtheeto, uikualasele, uitachale ngale.
Okay, then they'll make legal provisions to older persons to provide you with information on non-communicable diseases, as well as legal provisions for services for persons, older persons with disabilities and chronic illnesses.
Eh, kwezitatu, sisbonelelo, sizo Mtheeto, esikunya zisukubu, trabandabatala, bali, tinga ukenegwa uloazi, malunga, noba kodiswe, malunga nezi, fo ezo sulela yo, kunyane, tisengozo, esfaleklayo, bayaztumana, lomtheeto ke, uyayitachale ngalelo, nalayo, kutawanda wa talafneke, ni kweke, oku kodiswa kunjalo.
Then it's important that the residential care facilities and the community-based care services that is rendered to you and where you live is properly monitored and properly registered so that you are better protected in terms of this legislation.
Kwakona, amaziko, utunakuwa bandabatala, anikeselinga, chalelo, kubandabatala, kubalulekile, uku temawa, beke esuweni, ngendela, fanelekleyo, kuti, enza, kufanelekleyo, kwekachalelo, bayni kubandabatala, okwesbi, niri, lomasiko, kananjalo, kufanele, abi apalisiweng, kuxemte twene, ayaziwa.
Then something that's come up in the previous public hearings is the senior citizens asking that their caregivers be properly trained, so the training of caregivers to take care of you is also included in the amendment ball.
Kwezinye inda obese kuo zo, apukchakuwa samamela kwanaisi, kuo zo londu, iye ya kachazo la, inda, uyo kuba ke, oh, ike givas, esikumaziko, abakuo, kufaneleke, zifumanaye, ukakasho, fanelekleyo, ukuse zikuazu, kwenza, umstezo, fanele, oh, ngendela, fanelekleyo, lomtheeto shomelo, sizenka, oké, nalayo, indo, uitachale ngalelo, unazoe sisbonelelo, esijonge nenooko.
Okay, then also, if you are being abused in your home and you've got nowhere else to go, you can't stay in that abusive home, so this law will also make sure that you are safely removed from that environment and placed in a place of safety.
Kwakona, uku bangaba mshambi, useli ekaya, ape kaya kute gandi, uyatukunya zowpata, kanga kaku hle, aunyanzile kanga bama usale, aposa unga chandi, lomtheeto ke, unesbonelelo sobake, kufanele kilo, usuzuwe, usiwekwizi, kuelfanelekleyo, elizagneka, ingachalelo, efelele wen na.
Then there's also amendments made to court procedures that when you come to court, your cases will be handed in a more sensitive manner, and also there is a number of legislation amendments that will empower the court to also provide the Minister for Social Development with details of the offender, and that will go down in a senior persons register, abuse register.
Kwakona ke, kube konesbonelelo, phaklomtheeto shomelo, sengunjalo, kaku ketekwenzeku, mdala wachela siselo, esbanka, lukuti magayo unikesela, ubuno na ngunjalo, kanya, yomangala, lomtheeto ke, unesbonelelo sobake, kaku sekenzo, ngomdomdala, uwelhelo siselo, maksekenzi swane na ngendela, eku na kalsu veluano, akona malungselelo, akfuneke nziwe, eku na kalsu velano, glomdu, mdala, kafneke ngunjali, kwakona, kukojisone, sebele, elezo, upursolazo, Mtheeto, ngemite twetele, ukutifaneleke, amtu lawa, utewa, angumenzo, ubobi, kufuneke, ekijia, 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 kwekamalake lazewe, elubala, ubalo, umduye, na, ukapazale, kusendos, esikumela kunjali na, lomtheeto shomelo ke, uza nezphakamiso, ezlo locho.
The definition for physical abuse will also be expanded to include more aspects such as deprivation of nutrition and medical sedation, but also neglect and exploitation, to name but a few.
Kwakona ke, ku, ku, lomtheeto shomelo, uza na zonengaiteso, es, es, za, ukwandi, somzekelo, kaku tetong, ukutokuumezo, kanyo, ukapata katalala, uyayitachisa, lomtheeto, uyanyabi sa, ukuti, uku patata katalala, kanyo, ukapata kobe, ukuka, ukulangi, sokomdomdala, ukuvijwa, indoba, magafumanaye, ama yesa, ngetlase funeke, fuminengayo, kunyanezinye, ke, ititize, kezo, ukapata katalala, komdomdala.
And then lastly, the amendment ball will also include ways to eliminate the harmful practice of witchcraft accusations against senior persons.
Kwakona, lomtheeto shomelo ke, uza ne, soloja, elit, ma yipili iswe, ingolelo, eh, eh, yonzagalisayo, elimaza, abandabatala, ekokele, bama kutwe, balinyazwe, ingolelo, ifanoba, umduka epa, kwe mshambi, amba, zee, omtheala, kasa, tubusuka pina, kuba, ngonduya, pasamisilin, ngondru, noga, ngomdomdala, paketeng, ngonduya, etewa chincha, ibala, lubuson, ngonduya, ukula, isolu palala, wate, waeba, wabawa, wambi, akijia, kuba, kutwale, kuihaka, kanyo, liku kaka, isenzos, lo locho, kelo, Mtheeto, uzisingela, panzi, uyazibulala, ezo ngolelo, zinchalo.
Ingos.
Thank you.
Oh, wakulza, wakaluma. Usuka ngapi ma, usuka kwe ipinge.
Epil, ndau, kama ndau, pisana.
Ah, nganeni pisana, pezulu, ne pisana, pezulu? Laposizalelo, ekona, nen, nen, okeli, baki, betunani, episana. Eh, umama, bam, abange na, yonutata, siyakoli, sukala, nige gafi ki, eske, ngelika, esabandwa batala, bebe, sebe konababuza, ibikala, ni nile ndo, kiswe kile ziyela.
To the elderly who have just arrived now, they found us already proceeding, we are very sorry that we started whilst they were still coming, we were pressed by time, and the elderly who are already here, they were concerned why we don't start, and even their sugar levels now were dropping.
Kotwa ke, sinetemba, lindo ba, lamapetanana, uapetene yo, azani ngeti sektin, nifunje, uwe, emakaya, ngabandwa nabenu, siyayazi, ni sugekte.
But we, but we hope that documentation that you had handed over outside will assist you when you are at home, if you can ask your children to assist you in reading it.
Ngoku ke, lituba, umto inbukuni.
Now it's your turn.
It ball is a zanglisi.
The ball is in your court.
Net ball? Masipakamise izanja ke, abandwa bati, bama, bazofomla, kulumtheeto shomelo, sizenao, eh, bati kabe, phakamise izanja ke, bezenga pambili, baza ubekwa istika, ezinzono, sisa bambinesa, bontenbi, nyeyeitu, bazenga pambili, maskale apa ngasemnyango.
All those who want to make inputs, they will indicate their intention by raising offense, where they will be given a sticker with a number, they will have two stickers.
Susaloni.
You can sit on that.
Kopa po ma. Sikonisnisan?
Another hand?
Sikala kueleka.
Start on the left.
Mages, oh, wesbi ni, unazuzi.
Second one.
Ukono wesitatu nga apa?
First one on this side.
Naunkia umama pangemva. Naunkia umama etwelipareti pa. Kanimni kenistulo betu ma kun. Ngonu mbeka pa, ngambeka pinge ni mbeka pa. Ma bezze ababa paga misa izanja eh. Ma bezze akuel kala, na bayan. Naunkia eh, wenalutwa liparet eh, 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 mnyam. Ma bezze ngapambili betu na, ma kunawa shua zele. Matatia lifikile.
Still outside.
Mas bonizancha zase matatia ele. Inkosi.
Masamele kuel chala keta sekupaka.
Inkosi. Obaninsa bezai, abaga bima nitskoto. Rosmaskeba fuu zaga mila boka. All right, all right. Mas ni ku mama ke a, 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 a somle, a, a ngene. Asondele, ucho banu mboko sondele. Mama ke uko omteeto enfikie uko na apa uko nuwe yomcha. Watuwa umdu ne kua, wizu ngapi? Uto uni kwenje inisuso mchan. Namke nji za ulandela lo omkomo. Anfunu muosan fikalu.
You will be given five minutes.
Masibule ispace apokcho baninsa bantabafunu ngene ngapo. Akungene kiso, paga semnyango betu? Akutigele kipane? Okay. Iya mam. Ndigu mamwa ukaata.
I'm Mrs. Carter.
Ndigu suka emzimfubu.
From Zimfubu.
Ndia wamke la kulu lo omteeto.
I welcome this bill to a great extent.
Kanga kentoko obandi nwelela ukonkeza.
In so much I want to add.
Ndifu manise apa uku ba inkosi ingati asfakwanga.
I've noticed that in this bill, there is no mention of inkosi.
And inkosi tinasi says lalini, si talanazo. Si kabo abantu kala ababa jongayo abantabatala.
And we in the villages, we stay with them. They are the first people who look after the elderly.
Kwakona no lucha, ingana no lunga fakwa.
And the youth, I also wish that they should to be also.
Kwakona ke gule, am, gulo, glom, glo amendment. Ndifu manise indoko uku into.
We are disturb in the TV.
Apa bakuwa suwa, bapa, bapa, bapa eh. Pa right, bamba kanyo kleyo ndawo.
On the side.
Eh, we mamikolo ngopaza miski. Uko na iti quality services. And eh, abantabatala, they are provided with quality services and afforded the necessary protection by society. Besi nen, bendi kaya, kaya la, kaya la indowo ba. Unjanu ba ninga sem, susonge zelele. Indowo uku ba paya wesa project esu uzo. Ku fagelele is securities. Ukwenze indowo uku ba abantabatala, bashale be kuselekeile.
I wish that to make this input. How will it be if you can aid some securities among the people who are assisting us in our centers? So that the people who are housed in a particular center are found, find themselves protected?
Nanga pezulu, kweza zii, kweza project esu uzo. Ezinizi, zezo tjuwe godaka. Abantabatala, abako, abakuselekanga. Goba izazinzu zaboziyawa ezin. Inga panga neti swa, bakelu ezinzu. Ezlunglele no uku ba akuko i RTP, apoglo ekshalen. Kwenzi uwe, izinzu ze RTP zu. Uku sevade na yo, indawe is a court, where's the project, Sam?
And furthermore, in the places where they are staying in these institutions or these safe homes, these build, the structures there are made of mud, which is not a secured structure and it can collapse at any time. How about during these RTP houses, the provision of the RTP houses should also make provision for them to get a structure which is a proper structure built under this project of the RTP?
Kwakona, ka selle ingeni le i RTPzi es lalini. Unganjani ka abantabatala, bani kwe kala. Atumdomdala elala, abeno koseleke wa fumaana inzu. Uku ba kaku hajwa, hajwa ngogo, amba kwe inzu. Gogo go amba kwe la. Umdomdala abanizi, uya uswede tenga kanga te. Abufuma no babu nan bokala, ulenzo ka re RTP.
And again, when the time comes for you to build. When the time comes for you to build RTP houses in a particular village, how about you start providing houses for the elderly? So that they get their houses before they pass on? Because at times you follow a certain uh, for, uh, role and that results them not getting their houses. Or they pass on whilst they are still on the waiting list, waiting for their houses. I suggest that you please prioritize giving houses to the elderly.
Oku be la ennako, ule quality services esfunyenongabantabatala. Inkali za bantabatala. Inga kwataya we provinces, inga reinforced. Inga, inga biyeluwa imali. Abwenze indo kuti, imali ka iya ni ke lo katuadle. Imali abantabatala, itelele ekwenzeleni abantabatala. Inga kunzuwa, ihande, yofala, wesininda.
Then when it comes to providing the elderly with the social grants, I wish that the kind of social grant they are receiving need to be protected. It should not be reduced. If it comes as a particular amount, they should receive it as that particular amount. It should not be reduced at all.
Oku kanga pezulu, batisebe iniki wegele imali. Ibe,ibe kona, we, in, in, ibe apa eh, eh, we, we provinces. Nazo zisi kualasele, ube westekwe locals. Nazo gogo njalo, inga, inga kuselwa imali ya bantabatala. Inkosi.
As it comes from national and goes to provinces. And also at local, I wish it should be protected from all these spheres of governance.
Apa em Alfredo, asinayo i old age home?
In Alfredo, we don't have an old age home.
Siya kela, inga, unga kona, i old age home kuwa kuwa abantabatala. Abanale alzemia, abafunyanu agengogo kutwe bayabaya kula, bayabaya thagata. Badenga bo bantu ke gogo ke, ababula wa yo emisinyab. Ingasingana yo i old age home ya lapa eh, Alfredo.
I wish that I, I, Alfredo, we can be built in a structure which will be an old age home. Because we have elderly people who find themselves moving around, not knowing where they are, but they are accused of witchcraft. So those people are not protected. We wish that we do have get an old age home for protecting those people.
Inkosi.
Thank you.
All right. Bazala bangeta yo siya kolisa, uka la ningega fiki. Zai pinda, pinda londa ba yu keli kolo, sitala ningega fiki.
To those arriving, we are apologizing for starting whilst you are still on the way.
Ngoko, ngoko, basizele umsho iskomelo, omteeto shkomelo. Abantu abatala, bonge zelela kulomteeto shkomelo, sizenawo. Puti bayakaza, obasiyakasa, oka nyesiyakasa asiambe la nowo. Ngoko, bapa paga misa izanja umdo kwenze ba ikoni du eshekeleyo. Aipati siwe. Otu mamaznitzindo angazeteta angazkaseka. Uti ma liya kunzuwa, ana ba ipatchet na litunzuwa yo, imama. O kuesbi ni, uti ma kua kiwe izinzu. Goba izinzu zezotaka, and that's my center. Ezozotaka oka nyepatsa yiva, sa utumelu. Tichilo mosati siampa namakosa, eh, department. Masipaga mei social workers waving she, nichiku busonchonge bantu.
Social workers should stand up and raise their hands, face the community.
Nazia. Eh? Esbulela indoba, nenzee mvula yo bani de lap. Sedenzile chat, obanbayaleze ku ba ma batoa hinku ap. Itse piti baza uzazisumduka tetaa apa uba unbanina. And umtwinakiya kekaisiza, simkomba kula mtu. Apizinayo, ascalele nati apa ngapambili ba, wenza nduninga luni. Naala ikosa le department yenu, elisuka kunfu.
From a department from last year.
Na lundienda pazamanjeka ngongo galazis, malpaga me.
I made a mistake of not introducing myself. Can you please rise?
Na ngumpati win. So uzao ni pekla shangendela indo uzazo tati ndoni stetayo ap. Asedenzengaso ke yenu. Masini ke kengo omye olantela yo. Utoake isutulo snongo pele benzitimna maba kaulize basonde. Mas chekisho kokobe la kuel kala. Ngaba wonke umdu, kuel kaluniki we okinba, uzo konkeza. Uzo kasa, oka nyu uzo kasa, lo omteomo. Spediti zanja ngabo, nazia. All right. Uya paga misa apo tata, mama? Mama one kya eh, 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 ya, nazia ndok. Naunku mam. Naunkia napaa, betun, ninga tunakali galu. Se abala, five minutes, five minutes.
Don't be provoked.
Tito la man kuze no bazitatu iztulupa ngapandu. Olantela yesenfa ku mama, uzao tati tala esu suka klanda wasuka ku. Ma kuze no bazitatu, kaku bo nakalba kuzeleka kulu. Goba na anzistulo pangeva. Mas ni ke wenake tata, unga paga misa kanga nchaku.
Man dibuleleke ba, bantabatala base parliamente. Siya bo ngara kulu ba lifige.
We thank you from parliament for coming to us.
Dingwee, dingwee. Suti bantabatala, dingwee.
Kau lapo pambili galogo umdomdala. Man dibongara kulu ye bantabati. Ubanisile uzo ti si begimi bono yetu kulomteeto yilwayo. And asgenwa fale ndili shoi kamala, kotu ngati sebushiwa. Ulo iso luba angolo na eh, kona ape Mount Elif. Wustili, wustilisala ape Mount Elif.
Amo iso luba angolo from Mount Elif.
Kulaliya se pruxnek. Kulaliya se lower pruxnek.
Lower pruxnek. Eh, from the lower pruxnek.
Eh, ndili chwakaga mnumaya kukatiti, amen. Eh, ndimlo. Eh, man di beka ngenawandi ya uchasa lo, lo omteeto yilwayo.
I support this bill.
Ndidi nendwen nga se ndiye ngezage, kanwenani nje apogoo.
Just want to add.
Eh, liti dela milizi, kukona bantabatala abangoko ko especially. Abashale makaya, ufugelomtomtala usheli nabazu kula abashtengwe eh, yedu. Esheli nje nabazu kulu abashtengwe. U abazali babo mshambi bayewitoro pezulu. Si bale mshambi goka apa, oka nyegoka houti.
We do have elderly women who are staying at home. For example, you'll find an elderly woman who's a goko staying with seven grandchildren. And the parents of those children left to big cities like Cape Town or Houghton or Jobek.
Ufuma no ute, lo omtomtala ushala apa nabantwana. Kunsima usheli nje kuel kaya yedu. Msahombe nabazala bana abwenka shabantwana babasapota bantwana indre ngalo. Ufuma no ute, usinhlalo ayihlala yo. Jongo basikesba bona, guma bona bute nda kola ngikola nje nseta bantwata. Ufuma no ute, ba, na, na sama pepe nba vela bantwata. La usheli glenpilo ipila yo. Usheli nje indlele bona ucha ganase churi itino, besheli glonda.
And as she's staying with these seven children, you'll find out that those parents don't contribute nothing towards the maintenance of those children. And then as you see even on newspapers or on TVs, and you'll find out that she's staying there hopelessly without security.
Bendi kela ute, eh, ingaba i parliamento oka nyayi governmenti nga smeta. I, ibonelala ne nabantabatala balolo sobo. Ute banga, banga fmanis security ngai pina nje.
I wish that parliament or government can assist us to play a role in making sure that these elderly people do get security.
Anye je indo, inga tumama suka puka wa iti kapaga nganani. Ute abantabasha, banga, banga, banga fawa glen da with security abantabatala. Inti ninto, go babo na, banga abo abakulu gase, abak, abasukumeza bantabatala.
The previous speaker mentioned something about the youth, involvement of the youth. I support that and I feel that the young people need to be included in this bill, in this sense that they can be used as the security. Because they are the people who are playing a major role in abusing the elderly. So if they can be given something to do which is positive, like giving them a task of being the security in these centers.
Nte tu ute glondo, nfunu ute, umdua, umdomsha kaike wa bono umdomdala esukumeze. Abeneli zazoliteta, oka nyi abenendo yenza yo nje ngomtomsha. Ka ebona umdomdala esuku nyazo. Anga thuli kupena, goba ka itula. Uzo chukuti unaye, ungo mia osukumeza, lo, osukumeza yo. Funatka eboni npe ngalunganga kumdomdala, ai tet.
And the young people should be given a task of being the safeguardians of these elderly people. For instance, if there is something wrong being done to an elderly person or against an elderly person, they should intervene. And should they not intervene, that would show that they, they are in agreement with the one who's doing this abuse towards the elderly person.
Ukwenze zage, anye nte nkoludi ngabe oku be la, obantu anlebalanga. Iti ababa bakuwazo, yile ma bema neli zinabo, gule, gulo kusuku nyazo obantu. Baben, na, baben ninto, babeneli zobo aliteta yo. Esuku nyazo ngobantu special bantabatala.
And the people living with disabilities should also be taken cognizance that in the issue of elderly people who are being abused or who are being victims of abuse, that the elderly should also have a say in, in this bill.
Man dibuleleke bantwata.
Thank you.
Eh, molweni zinko keli.
Greetings to our leaders.
Di zaapa, ndi zobulela ngalomteeto inizena wo.
I stand here to thank you for the amendment bill that you presented to us.
Se abu lela kakulu, ndi kela ukonkeza. Ko.
I thank you so much about it. I want to add.
Jango kosixala es lalini, ema panjeni, sikute ne tulup.
As we are staying in villages far from the towns or cities.
Uko abantu abatala, umdomdala, obonakali ndoko kubana. Ufanele kubana, kule male aifuma na yo yenzoza. Ma kube no ko uyonkeze, luba magakuwa zugu fuma na umneti si.
We do have elderly people who get this amount of support grant. But out of that money now, they still have to. They should be given a chance to qualify or be given opportunity to get a granting aid so that they can also afford to get somebody to assist them.
Eh, o kunyeke, jango kosikute sisezilalini. Kuya bonakala ba umdu omtala uya xoku nyazo akualape kaya ngabantwana. Kube kengo, sikute ne, singenazo ezinda opaisilalini. Okufane loba si trino akuso, kasi xoku nyazo.
As elderly people staying in villages, you'll find an elderly person staying at home. As elderly people staying in villages, you'll find an elderly person staying at home, being abused by the children that she stays with. Because we don't have these centers where we can be kept, we in the villages.
Ndii sugagemna, emonfre.
I'm from Monfre.
Kuila liyase Tibane.
From Tibane village.
Kuiproject engu Mtombo Kazi.
From a project called Mtombo Kazi.
Engos.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cholom.
Ndiya kasa, lomteto ndo kasa kakulu, ukalasuvakuma ne kutua ukona. Ungate uzo fikela la ngakasana uki, ndingu non tutuzelo, lanti.
I'm non tutuzelo, lanti. I support this amendment bill and I've heard some time ago about this bill and it never came to reach us. I'm happy that at least at end, it came to us.
Engos.
I thank you.
Diya bulisa kakulu, uizpatama njazetu.
Greetings to our leaders.
Dipuma epizana ewi.
I'm from Bizana, at a place called Weni.
Dinguno fiki le Kabinda Aba. Kabinda Aba.
I am no fiki le Kabinda Aba.
Diya uvyeela kakulu lomtetu.
I'm very happy about this bill.
Goba ndiya ubonba uzo sikipa ebuwi.
Because it is here to take us out of the bad life that we are living in.
Di tela ukongeza kanyani.
I want to make some few suggestions or additions.
Ema bankini siye, ema kakulu, kutu utatiba siza wa pantsi.
At the banks, we queue for a long time until we feel shaky.
Di tela ne, home epizana, ibekona, goba sia xukuniezmeze kakaku.
And furthermore, I want to request that we should be built a home at Bizana because we get abused a lot there.
Na lapa ema projectini, zmekona isachuriti, ezikakashiwe yo.
And then at the projects that we are in, we should have trained securities.
Diya bulela kakulu.
I thank you.
Sandela koko na.
Amen. Di parama, loba ubulisahinkokele zetu.
I stand to greet our leaders.
Ezifela kuinda onginda.
From different areas.
Sibulela lomteto umshekanga, kwa uyilwelo glinda.
We thank you for the legislation that you brought to us.
Si dipuma epizane Alfredso.
I'm from Bizana at Alfredso.
Weni Mandela.
Weni Mandela.
Dinguno zipotos.
No zipotos is my name.
Sibulela kakulu.
We thank you very much.
Si tela kakulu nikasa ba, ezito, masibene nda we eskonanakuyo sitenga, we maketegas.
To finkili.
Ezifinkili.
I suggest that at the shops, we have some identified spot where we as elderly women can be buying from.
Ezifetela.
And in the hospitals.
Masibene nda uzo basi oni soka gushe.
We should a place that is paying attention for us, the place that is going to advise us as the elderly.
Disongeza umteto, eh, ndisongeza di tela. Uba, jango si ngamaketegas, siya sikule, ufoneyeze amblessi. Singezengo kauleza, masibene amblessi zetu maketegas.
I want to request that as the elderly women, when we are, we fall sick, we summon the ambulance, the ambulance don't even turn up. And we request that we should have special ambulances that are dedicated for us as the elderly.
Ezizote, basi chichelwa, lesintzimbizagoz tetagba, ma tetaguso. Si kaulezi uzo fikamku, lino ketegas.
Ambulances that when called, they will through the phones, they will quickly turn up because an elderly woman is sick.
Sibulela kakulu ba patmet.
We thank you our leaders.
Uba sa kukuka, sipera zimo.
Because when we get old, we even kind of are losing our minds.
Uba gutala si chupega, si tringlinmengazo kukuka.
Because we've been struggling for some time in our old age.
Utuere ngani, pumile pantende, onsosapantende, lasheka danga, ulibonba, unli, unnyango, utuere diyata.
And when I go out outside to maybe for to the toilet, when I come back confused and not find the direction, I'll be accused of witchcraft.
Si telu kusere losokwezi.
We request that will be protected.
Ma ubekama sechurites ndawenisitengu.
We need to have securities in the areas where we are staying.
Naguma project tetu, masibene.
And in our projects.
Sibulela kakulu, engos.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Siya kasa ba fuit.
We support.
Siya kasa.
We support the bill.
Kasa umteto yilwayo, amen.
We support the bill, amen.
Molweni zinkokele zetu.
Greetings to our leaders.
Diya bulela ubala panamsange.
I'm happy to be here today.
Dingu bongeka epuka, uye yetu project.
Banifani?
Bongeka kasha epuka.
I'm bongeka kasha, from the area called Epuka, from Yeye Two Project.
Di lapa namtsange, gogokasa, imi teteniseseleyona.
I'm here today to support the legislation that you brought to us today.
Siya bulela, si telu wenzewa izinjuku, goba lukusitalizintenesezotaka.
We thank you and we request that you build us proper structured houses because we stay in mud houses.
Si tela uwenzewa izinjuku tinama ketegasi, iho.
And also request that you build us homes, we as the elderly, where we can be taken care of.
Di lapa emondeilifuna.
I'm staying in Mount Elif.
Di paka misa goba, siya bulela indesnesenzele yona.
We thank you for what you did for us.
Siya kasa gogo ke nsesenzede gona.
We'll support you in everything you did for us.
Siya bulela, engos.
I thank you.
So ma loba ubulisah, sonke inkokele zlapentini. Di bulela, lomteto esuzesalwe yo, ape Alfredso.
Greetings to all the leaders present in this house. I also thank you for the legislation that you presented to us at Alfredso.
Dingu nomanesi matikizela, olapa epizana, osenzenla Mtaisa Zalini.
I'm nomanesi matikizela here in Bizana.
Mtaise.
And working at Mtaisa in the villages.
Dingu caregiver, we project here Smtaise Old Age Group.
I'm a caregiver of Mtaise Old Age Group project.
Eh, dingu caregiver, nje payana ndishala nokoko, sesebenzela mz. Sesebenzela mz, nje sesizami le uwenza isiza, sasasigela engos.
Eh, zame caregiver, I'm working with elderly women, we work in a private property. As we are staying in that property, we also managed to get a side of our own.
Patige, we challenge esinayongama nja ogoba sa ke goba. In kampali esitrasaya social development, iyon nja gupela ayaki.
Now we struggle in building a structure for us. Because the department that supports supports our social development is not responsible for building. Only supports us with food or nutrition.
Besin gatseela ke gulumkulusuzesalwe yo. Eh, gubalamente, uba angakenkosia, ma agasifagele, paya, uba gesaskele. Izinda uzo basesebenzele, amaketegas, tuguso, indau ezisafe. Ubesda osesezagozo asko safe.
In the legislation that you brought to us, I wish that you should make a provision that we should get proper secure structures. Because where we are staying, we don't have those kind of structures and we don't have means to build such structures.
Di buye di chike, di buyele apa gubuke caregiver, di telle, uba engengeti, nagegosia, ma asongezelele, uti apa gulumkulu. If funding yo caregiver, singa engengete, selwa we funding, yo koko, yo goncho koko. Bene funding je, especially for caregiver, basesebenzanzee.
And coming on the side of the caregivers, I wish that you should have made the provision of funding the caregivers. We should not depend on the funding that is directed to take care of the elderly. We should, we should get a funding that is specifically directed to the caregivers.
Indo etan titzelen golumshogo is because, uku ya wea bizis finkili.
The reason why I make up this kind of a proposal is because food is very expensive.
Ufuma niseyongo, uba wa ileka caregiver, ipuma nse, ma gubaga lukusunele olhi ile, genhe, iprojecti.
And then on the side, you find out that the fund, that the money that needs to be given to the caregiver is so hard to get it out of the of the money before getting the groceries.
Di telle, ubulela kakulu, ubukobe no apa ela Alfredso.
I thank you so much. I thank you so much for being present here at Alfredso. I wish you progress wherever you are going.
Lontole itetu bano pa, unohkulu mente, ganti natis, baldegile, agasile balanga, siya bulela kakulu.
That means that we are also important to the government, the government has not forgotten us. We thank you so much.
Engos.
Thank you.
Dingu niki wenda bangulu.
I'm niki wenda bangulu.
Oi board member, we project, engu Sinosiso Support Group.
I'm a board member in the project Sinosiso Support Group.
Esse wini matikizela Mandela.
Etu wini matikizela Mandela.
Si, ma ndibulele, goba si fuma ne ipill of rights, si patenge sanza, si boni.
Firstly, I want to thank the the fact that we managed to get the Bill of Rights in our hands.
Indo ezinzi, sesezetewa, niso basasipinda.
Many things have been already said, I won't echo them.
Zimbi nini, ndo telu velago uzo.
There are just two issues that I want to touch.
Siya tela gulumteto, ifagu indo eh integration, yes, nje departments.
We request that in this legis, in this amendment bill, please include the integration of other departments.
Ingabingu mtoaloga social development, indo uchonga nanabantu batala gupena.
It should not be only the burden of the social department or social development to look after the elderly.
Nezini departments, masibena intervention.
The other departments should also play their role in intervening.
Esbi, ndo nchale lungena guyo.
The second issue I want to touch.
O caregiver, ababatwena bantu batala, esending.
The caregivers who are working in these centers to look after the elderly.
Siya halela, iflo nyere ndo, uba uhkulu mente, lo wetu.
We wish that you amend that our government.
O caregiver, siya bakalela, baba nti we i recognition of prior learning, oanye prior knowledge.
We wish that the prior knowledge of the caregivers should be recognized.
Galo gupagukazeti yetu, ikoni teteani RPL.
RPL?
Ukukazeti, RPL, recognition of prior learning.
In our kazet, there's something that speaks about the recognition of prior learning.
Siya halela baba fuma ne i awards, is certificate, ezizo wenza, babeno mbla, glento ba yen zaio.
We wish that they should be given certificates of awards that would make them to have interest in what they are doing.
Uba lema ba ifuma na ezis taipend, ingu nanaka ku.
Because the stipend they are receiving is very minimal.
So tlabenokawata through RPL, at least banga fumanitwe petele, esuwa uhkulu mente.
So at least if they can be awarded through the RPL, they can get something better from the government.
Engos.
I thank you.
Eh, sela ubulisihwe, zinkokele zame zangapambi.
You've been critiqued already, my leaders.
Lo tetayo, unomalisoma pela, osuka ema tatiel, winjatase, Tataise Old Age Project.
I'm nomalisoma pela from Tatiel, from the Tataise Old Age Project.
Engos, ndiya uzo kasa, lolele pil enzwayo. Enga gumbike ngoku kaita yakala, ezanteguti. Iti nyugi ya pezulu, natis, besikesesaba ipatin e paselyayo.
I support the bill before us, especially when you started by consulting us before you go and deliberate on your own.
Eh, indo, ndifunu ku itulani sanjango, ba ezinzi sesezetewa. Kugu banti tela bonka, abantu abas stakeholders, epileni, ugsuka onkosu, yagomasipala. Bagheba benzwa, babeyipati, yale pil, guba indo ezinzi zensega, kubo zenzwa, ebantu nabatala, uonkumtusalanae, abe usonde le wle pil.
Eh, I want to request that in this bill, in the process of processing of this bill, all the people that have a role to play within the lives of the elderly. For instance, the traditional leaders, the municipality and the province and whoever, all the stakeholders should be involved in this bill.
Eh, indo anikelu ku buzandi, klinisa, gune ndo eti ngagundu, we we project, ezenzelo abantu, sentro abantu, nje nabantu batala. Kuko nalendo, masiti i i izinjuku, antida yengezindu, nezini zindu. Utu bangaboga wasesebenza gwa uhkulu mente. Uteta fune goba koni ndo enzwayo, indawenu, shla kutuere na, au qualify. Difunu guswa white in abantu ebesebenza gwa uhkulu mente. Singa qualify, guswa zonge izindo, ezenzega epileni. Utu yofika gosasa, kutu kauti yau yaya, kutu au qualify.
One other thing that I want to touch is the issue. One issue that I want to touch is the issue of us, the people who used to work for the government, with all the services that are being provided to the community, like the RDP, the SASSA. We are told that you don't qualify because we used to work, we worked for the government. Why is it so? Because by the time that we want to apply for this, it does not mean that you are still employed at the time.
Engos, ndiya bona, ndiya itrasa lombo no kakulu, engos.
I thank you, I support this bill.
Diya bulisa ke, bobonkabanipatuale olu.
Greetings to everybody in this hall.
Eh, sibulela kakulu, uka paka ni, loba, sizo, sizo vesa, i, i, ngosetoga ni, kende, desponanga yo.
We thank you so much to giving us the opportunity to come forward and say our visions of youth.
Eh, jongo masibe shilo ke, abasa, abanabatala, basi ndo nesitengeayo, alsa zospinda.
As the elderly has already stated what is it that we need, I won't echo that has been mentioned.
Kotwa skonen zospinda, eyo goba abanabatala, basusela inneni, yavanda basha, goba batala, bana matola bala.
But there are those that I want to emphasize on, like the elderly being removed from the church because they are old, they they don't have those strong legs to stay for, to stand for a long time. And furthermore, they fall, they feel hungry.
Anye nanti, abanabatala, okanya, ez project, kaumnu, eh eh ngarapayundo, iprojeti ache. Ushala gwa, asale mzini, nobunza nina. Kotwa, masifawundi, atilumdu, kukama pa, akondenzo esanga pandlewa. Afunu sesezindu, zeprojeti, ndinga bete ache.
And then there's this other thing, when somebody does not get funding, you stay in your home and in whatever condition their home is. But after the person receives the funding, the person will claim that this is my property and you will hear from me.
Yo wene nusenge ukhulumenaga enele kosiam, a a a kange nelenba, sikwa uku ufuma masefoundi projecti. Ibenenda wenyayo, engasula ulwa uko mdu, ebeyefoundi lekoba kaluguwena, ebeyufeza. Yavbe la khulumenawa itata, wenzangom tetoa ache, anga enga engasabezi mtetoa ache, se ilawo ukhulumen.
That's why I suggest that the government should intervene irrespective of who the founder of the center was. Whenever the government gets involved in supplying that center with funding, then the owner or the founder of that center should not have much say. The government should have a say.
Eh nzo ngesage kwenyindo engolshogo. Apa uko abanabatala, abanabatala, apanele, baba banao ama forum, aketiba ba, baba male.
I also want to add here by saying there are elderly people who are supposed to have a forum that represents their interest.
Nengasina eto khulumen awakipama abatala ule lain, abas banababanabasa balueela. Kala ama forum asaba balueela, kotwa ndesitela ba, nama forum amakatreinwe, abena istifuke tetso ba, ni forum ele, ele melumdomtala, sitemele ngakumdomtala, alime dikhetegas.
For instance, if the government cannot remove the elderly from the queue, these forums are supposed to be the soldiers who see to it that the elderly are represented, taken care of where they have to be removed from the queues and so forth. So those forum members need to be trained to know how to deal with the elderly.
Ndesitela ba ama forum, magatreinwe, ukuse abena istifuke eti, okumdu ka ufikutin forum. Mnekebe kupalasa, ukupepo itinba, nantindweshao yo, endifunu siniwe, nikumeleni mmeri khetegas.
They need to be trained, those members of the forum, so that when they deal with the elderly, they need to have certificates, they need to have something to prove when they say they are trained to take care of the elderly.
Koba kalu khulumen ugo te, nezinda wena ufo la gozo. Abanabakufisete esawo ba wenzegani, uzisina eti abanabatala singe ama forum.
Because the government is far from where we are staying and where we are queuing. And yet the forum is among us is locally, they can see whenever we need to be taken care of.
Ya bonka menzo ngesalo now, engos.
Thank you, that's what I wanted to add.
Bonaku, kangusu ya kasa lomchiro kenyang. Ya kasa lomcheta ofigile, ubozo sneta tinaso, kwenya eslemanagoso.
I support this bill because it's here to support us, to assist us wherever we get hurt or injured.
Sino kakulu, nekotwa.
Thank you so much. What is your name, sir?
Ekamani Mandalu Kalwene, Epizana.
My name is Mandalu Kalwene from Epizana.
Iprojeti, we Nikolo.
We.
Inikolo.
We coming from Nikolo Project.
Diabo.
Because, thank you very much. Nikolo. Yeah, Nikolo.
Engos, ntsangani so, se ubulisi we. Eh ndirungutembe Gatiniswayo.
Thank you very much Chair, everyone has been critiqued, my name is Tembe Gatiniswayo.
Ovela ema tatiel.
From the area of Mataliel.
Ku papama lunda Old Age Project.
From Papama lunda Old Age Project.
Ndilapa gene ndino vuyo olukulu. Ngoba, dibonilu go te ikona endawo, apa ndino ktenamke ndikalekona.
Indeed, I am grateful because I realize that there is a place whereby I can express my concerns.
Genkayenaki esipesguazo, esenda wene estala gozo.
Because we're experiencing problems in our places of stay.
Yo endawi asema tatiel, isu pege kakulu.
The Mataliel area is very poor.
Ngoba isindwezi ninsesiko.
We don't have services.
Isikalo samge kandilapa gene nam, ndinesitelo sespezeela.
One of the services that we require is the hospital to be built for us.
Sespezeela sa se Mataliel, so yige kangen delema ngalisayo.
The hospital from Mataliel is in a dire state.
Eh kutenge ngamke beniteken, ndidio tela uku ba ingati sanga kelwa sespezeela, ga guze.
My request is that we would like to have a new hospital that is in good condition and with good infrastructure to be built for that community.
Ngoba, kwenya wesi isna zopa sespezeela, asana yenchwenda woe, yekte ndidi i waiting room, yangapanga panjekasi ye gukwecha.
One of the things that are lacking there is the waiting room that is outside where you are sitting waiting for the doctor. We don't have that infrastructure.
Se chali langas, netasimvula.
We are staying outside and the sun is coming upon us and the rains are affecting us whilst we're still waiting.
Kantiga imatielinabantu abanis kakulu.
I can give you an example to say that the population of Mataliel is very big.
Ukuse uba uzamfuma na ukechanga lomini, ufunegu ba wena uyolalela pambiili, kanti usuka eslali.
We live in far flung areas, in the rural areas. If you want to access the doctor, you must sleep over the hospital so that in the morning you can be the first on the queue.
Ngoba sifiga ilani se indega kulu, delinge ekasha, uteske uvalwe unga ngenanga ukecha, kutwe buyangomso.
They actually tend us back home because sometimes the queue is too long in order to access the doctor's services.
Na landa wena eh piswa uko bagaye waiting room, kosiam. Le esala abantu payana abazau, ku bazau tatu abasu emtata. Ufunegu ba maga ambe ayolala kona, umnyango, aunata ngo, uulu ngakumnyango, ingeliasingene lanje.
We are affected by the cold because the door is wide open. Sometimes if you want to be transferred to Umtata, you are compelled to sleep over, to spend the night, so that you can be the first one in order to be transported to Umtata. The infrastructure is very, very bad.
Eh kuteleni kwamke ndikela, uki silungisalo sespezeela, esine tayo, ndiatembo go te nepeti kosiam, sisa uzipiwa ngoba, sitwalanzima se silapo, ulakmitiwe, zipeli peti, ufunegu balala panja sponjin, pansuwe peti.
We don't even bed to sleep if you are admitted. Sometimes we are forced to sleep in the spawns under the bed.
Dimla oka la osake suwa sponjin, pansuwe peti, omye umtu olele e peti.
I am talking from experience because it happened to me, I had to sleep under the bed or somebody and I had to sleep on top of the spawn, I'm talking from experience.
Genkaya pantu uku ba balisiguabo.
The population is very big in Mataliel.
Si aso olala kakulu ndichonange ambulance.
We don't even have ambulances that are able to care us.
Jango basi seselali ninje insela imbi, kusengati sanga lungisalo nenzeela.
The road infrastructure is very bad. We also request that we must have road infrastructure to be built for us as that community.
Jango basi seselali ninje si fauna fauneli ma amblenzi. Sitesi kede tina ababandu abasesebeza paya, sita abaskatala langa, kanti ambulance aziku, sapumi le ye kwenyenda woe.
We normally put the blame to the health personnel who are in charge of ambulances, only to find that the ambulances are not in big numbers so that they can cater for the community. There are not so many ambulances.
Dinesitela ogafuti nesindo sis, ngenela ema kaya nesitela emzin, ugo timasio sangane la konasi ngoko. Ngoko asana ndawo, egutwa mtu ye yetu, siyo sangane la gulo ndawo.
We don't have a center for the elderly people. We normally knock to the doors of some family people in order to use those centers privately. Therefore, we need centers that can be built specifically for the elderly women.
Oh ndiakela kakulu.
I plead and plead and plead.
Ou kakulu, oh isu pesela abandakwe tu, kuse imak.
Especially if we can get a hospital.
Go baba tebalale payano koko, benga subaba sa ulala, kebe kwenzege ningomso.
The elderly people are forced to spend a night whilst waiting for the services.
Engos, ntsangapambi, ndiakasa yonka indwe tetu wayo apa.
I support the bill, Chairperson.
Pansi ngokukumeza koba abatala pansi, pezulu ngamalungelo abandabatala pezulu. Nitekewa vocotech. Nisikwaisenezinye esingezo zetu esingaza langazu. Lomtundu espechele kotwa sa ukretisa, si cho kotwa, lomtundu espechele, ya sa ukretis, manpele.
I want to add to say that the issue of hospital that doesn't fall under our responsibility, we are going to pass it to a relevant department. And also the issue of road infrastructure will actually refer it to a relevant department of transport.
Iwarinje yamantimbona, mto agoma spala apukon.
Is there any official from the local municipality here?
Ibe lishwa, tingakunise kanga ngai, bama kabekona. Ngoba esinye indo sisa zulsa kubo, esinye sisa ztata sisi se pezulu, zisuke pezulu kuzangenza.
It's unfortunate that that official from municipality is not here, but some of the issues that have been raised here, we are going to take them over to the relevant department at national level so that after that the response can trickle down to the local sphere of government.
Lo wesinhu, nisidi yau fanao, chonga kafshige asingo yemo su human settlement, odwa nawo, sisa uchata su ukretisa yemyango inawo.
Yes, indeed, the issue of houses has been raised here, but now we are going to refer this matter to the Department of Human Settlements.
I caregivers, jengo basi sazuti, ndawezini nsesi yango ngopaleza caregivers gozo. Odwa nawo, sizo ujuliisa, ngoba wona ufanele u social development, abo nugutu wenzanjani.
Indeed, the issue of caregivers has been raised here. Then we are going to propose that there must be a strategic partnership between the Department of Social Development and the Department of Health in order to look at the issue of lack of, or the shortage of caregivers. But I'm only the chairperson, not the committee, not a social worker therefore. I do understand the burning issue of caregivers because it has been happening for quite some time and it needs to be addressed.
Masize kweleka, tingalibasanga.
Let us come to the left side.
Nangu mama ngunamba one ma, nangu, nangu, u mama enkoli mwa zopra uku two, nangu u u three, uku three, nangu kya ngata ta isata ta, uku three. Nangu mama etwele i kia epited, uku four. Nangu five, ingo de i isbexi, ingo de indo e gray, uku five. Maspele pa uku five, kweleka. Sisa ukuweke, uyaulandla, ubenku six. Ubenku seven, pa kabelin, ubenku eight, ipele si valisozo.
As we move.
Msha mbikange ni bo ne engosi apa ikona betun.
Perhaps we have unseen a traditional leader that is amongst us.
Kona ndosiyale zleyo obama sibe nazo, engos. Ni nyani sileka nitesindo zechya emazantsi. Ngoko engosimazisneji se uku beza imbizo, zikwazu tato sindwezti.
You are correct to say that many, many factors are happening in the local communities. Therefore, it is very important that we must have the traditional leader so that they can be able to mobilize or to call in visitors or gatherings so that such things can be addressed at that level.
Masimeke ngentela isamama, five minutes ke mama wamne. Oga pansi, senka puleli itolo sukmeteli pampam formuli. Madi bulela usumana elituba, jingu Masigulo.
Let me thank the Honorable Chairperson for granting this opportunity. My name is Masigulo.
Mtolo.
Mtolo.
Undabangulu.
From the area of Undabangulu.
Ndibulela kakulu ndoba sbene chief ekoyo pakatuwetu.
I'm also grateful that we have got a traditional leader, a chief, who is amongst us.
Ebnyani swenimina, ayin zanga tu, indwen nesa iteta, ngoba indwezi ninsesese tetiwe.
I'll be very brief Honorable Chair because many issues has been raised.
Eyogala endifunuku ipagamisa, yeti sikala kakulu ngage indo egutwa i means testi. Apo utwa umyeni, ubumkate uyapangeela, maganga ifuma ni maliendo lha.
Nowadays, a burning issue of means test whereby they say that if your spouse as a lady is working, you are not eligible to get a social grant.
Indo layo ebusungu ngoba, uti kanti abasangva ni kwanalo ukuskaas, kotwa abati vosan.
Now, it is very painful because we found that things here at home are no longer the same and yet the two couples are not yet divorced, but they are not in speaking terms.
Eh yes, mini indo, ukoni indo kasa trainwa guyo kutwa the older citizens monitoring, ekutazi ndoba, ma gube kumtetovela pa ukhulumente, uoba zonge departments, ne clinic, ne banki, gube koni tweniseki sa indo ba, undo mdala o over sixty, maganga mi echuini, ibise ikala zue kenga.
Now, we, sometime a while ago, we had a training of older citizens monitoring whereby it was encouraging that be the burns in the shops and everywhere, an elderly person must not chew in the line.
Indwezka lisayo ke asu vaga kumtetoka khulmento twenisa esu zinto.
Now.
Ume kuichu, utwa ke mshla wambi, ye yavabanda badyalale.
Now, what is a great concern is that there is no law or provisional law to say that there must be a special queue for the elderly people. There is nothing that is speaking to that.
Ui kona ke enyindibike yakala ngemali eh 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 esikela ibiyeluwe. Indo na yo kanga te yo ufiga, kulenda wena funu ifesa.
Now, there was an elderly lady who was proposing that the budget allocation that is earmarked for elderly women must be secured, but now that elderly lady was here did not elaborate further.
Itige lendo, jango bangoku, lendo es projecti sabandabatala, bayabe kanyseleka abantu be sisa es projecti. Indo yenze kayo, sinikwa ifandi for masiki sabandabaituendi. Enti njo kaniki sabandabaituendi, ngoko abantu vetu sebe go forty, uku ya go fifty, imali oni mile, uku abandabaituendi.
Now, what is happening in our centers, we are only given a funding only for nutrition, to cater for twenty people only. But now if you look at the current reality, the number is increasing, the number is increasing up to forty, but oh yet the funding remains the same.
Eyokrebela ke, chowa benjichuba andizu tata gashalite.
As I said that I will be brief.
Waba caregivers sinabo, sitela kade yo trainwa, kunga yu ketwa kengo kaba abantu anabosbanu, bama bazoo trainerwa, ubaba besi caregivers, ma kutatwe kaba abantu anabas caregivers, besihteli sinabo. Kunga tuango ku kuya ufuna, abane matreki, ngoba abanaswe matreki, abasina bo, siathanda ba trainwe, ebnyani swen.
Now, Honorable Chairperson, as I move, I'll propose that when you train caregivers, you must not do what you call nepotism or maybe train people that are close to you. We encourage that these caregivers who are staying in those centers be given a priority.
Si akasa kakulu, untekenispatile wona, si abulela kakulu.
I accept the bill and I thank you for giving, for lending me your ears.
Diabuli sa betuna elgi ni yonte, ya se parlamente, si se parlamenta. Si bongalo mteto uyilwayo, ogogo basi de lapan, si kululeki.
Yes, I take this opportunity to create a portfolio committee of parliament and the people at large, I stand here actually feeling grateful that we are deliberating or we are debating this bill.
Sinezikalo ke, esizi pete yo, nezinto esizi bongayo, mankade ndibonge ononchalobe tunabasoncha yo, halala, halala.
Eh, we are grateful that we are coming here to, to actually give input on the bill. And I want to applaud our social workers because they keep on feeding us.
Si paya elkerwe nna njungu songezuluazi paya bayanda azaba mononcha. Igi project ya mngu songezuluazi, njungu Alpetina Tizana.
My name is Alpetina Tizana from Songezuluazi Center.
Gogo ndongeza. Apa kulumtehtunta? Ukuba kosiam. Inko si bezi funeka kakulu. Kuba njengba si paya je emapantini. Si konekeke uzo is kalazo zetu. Kasisuku nyazo si ngabadwa abadaala.
Now, I propose that let us have a clause that will also include the traditional leaders because when you are getting abused, we normally go to traditional leaders in order to lay our complaints.
Gogo ke, gi tibukunu nenewa nenimtanda elimvotela yo. Makake asik, asakele inju ya makese kadi. Siathala go tuenu twelve si shalemzi nombu. Usana ukipuma ni gogo.
Now, I want the government or the department to erect or build a center for us because since 2012, we have been living in a private residential place.
Di paybi le baba wai. Di kasile kakulu de milli ya nu ya wokba.
Yes, I support the bill and I support the government. And I am thankful for the committee or the parliament to having come down to be with us.
Kus.
Eh. Ah, disasugulisaboguchi wakotoa, si ngabulis. Mani bonge je lumzuzundu uniwale. Mani bonge je lumzuzundu uniwale namapa. Namiditi magendivele. Kama zwananje esikalo esisi nazo si ngabadwa ba dala. Ikamala amdi nguchohanes Ntlamba.
My name is Johanes Ntlamba. Eh, many things have been said here, but now I'll speak here and there on the issues that I think are important.
Eh, ndisugawi project eh bezongo by itali pansi kwe Untabangulu.
Tali. I'm coming from a project called Tali under Untabangulu.
Eh, ndilapa je mna ndinesikalo pakati kabantu abadaala. Esi mali. Eniwaa ama project. Ndi ibona mla ingale.
Now, my concern is that the budget is not adequate. That is directed to fund old age homes. It's not enough.
Eh, ndipindi winda uyeshbiini. Eh, abantu abadaala ndinyombo no oba abaku seleganga ulama paro akoyoke.
Eh, my other great concern is that the elderly people are not safe at all from these attacks who keep on terrorizing them.
Eh, emeholo inisilopi nemasi ohola. Ezilali napositana koi. Asisaku seleganga, goba nguchongwe le mali.
Even if it's a payday or for the grant, we go to towns, shopping malls. We are not safe at all because they keep on following our movements.
Eh, ndines lo so ngati eh, singage si bonele wekurtala lokuseleko. Si ngabadwa ba dala. Ezilali ni, napaya emeholo inisilopi nemasi ohola. I project nazo, ndinomla kakulenge ati singage si bonele. Ingale le malezi, ezinewa i project. Ingale uba ngabaniya ikwala seela ngoba. Eh, abantu banis eh projecti. Ve banis inje, kotoa. Imkata ngo, oniwezwa, uku ya upansi.
Yes, eh, the concern that I've raised before is that the funding that is offered to those centers is not enough. And also, my other concern is that we want to be safe at all costs. Be it you go to get your social grant or any other form of payment as an elderly person. We want to be safe at all times.
And this juanda kakulu, awabanda ba tetiyo be faga isikalo zabo. Ezinye de zinye de zivele, engus.
Yes, eh, I won't be long by those words. I am saying, I thank you. That's my submission, Chair.
Thank you.
Ham, 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 chui. Sizo ukwazika lokuniki tuba, lokpendu.
Let us be brief so that we can give other stakeholders to comment on the submissions.
Diabuli sa abapati betu abaseta flenbonke. Diabuli say inku yonkota to omama. Nabangnanenge kamalika yesu, amen.
I greet, I'd like to take this opportunity to greet the panel led by the Chairperson and everyone here. And I greet all of them in the name of my Lord and Savior.
Di bona uyeshuya buya nbonuma ngali isonamshange.
Yes, indeed, I see things are happening now and I can confirm that indeed, Jesus is coming back again.
Ah namshange sizi selwa izinto. Ezilwayo esisikala gubase uyiliwe.
Eh, now we are grateful for this opportunity because we are being consulted eh, first before things are passed eh, by the upper strata.
Si bulela amalu etu asse parlamente swabonez tivini. Si bulela kakulundweni swatele yona.
Yes, we are grateful for this bill and for members having to come down on us because many times we normally see you on television.
Eh, lendo ndizawi teti, ndise tetiwe. Madunga ne cleaners eziana. Fire ezilali nsiya zbona ziyakrina. Zikrina ziti zikrina abantu aban over eighty years.
Yes, we, eh, a situation, or actually, there was a a story that has been narrated that we do have cleaners in the rural areas that are cleaning for people who are over eighty years of age.
Siathala. Zlitas etuba uholumende. Ake ajonge kutino tata paya ulalali etu una sixty-two years. Akana mkoskasi. Agakwazuguwamba. Unonyana babini aban, abangafuma ni msele. Usokola kakulu. Umpelele nanzinkoskasi ndiazinigensa. Anamie.
Eh, we, we, we have a situation in my rural area whereby we have got eh, an elderly person who is sixty-two years old. He doesn't have a wife. He only had two sons who are also unemployed. But the Chairperson has intervened to say she's available.
Si amuzelukulumende abajonge nabu. Basewanminale badosego sixty abantu.
We want government to look at those people who are at that particular age.
Ogwe sibini banta ba weto. Si bona kwasin province. Amakwagona amakwazana. Enes transport zabo. Konikwanda mlesbaro. Old or old is kalasi istenkei.
Many times, we see in other provinces, the elderly people are cared for, they are given transport. That is, has, is having a return message to say old age people, we envy that, would like to have a similar service to us here in this province.
Zesi kuva natisi athela. Uba si isip, telele ngapambi lukuzenatisi kuva. Si ngamakwagona amakwazana alafa eh Alfredo.
We want to have those services as elderly people in the Alfredo region.
All right. Mamela ke. Alleluia. Masizole ka ngonbetun. Ndjengba awzumpali safaku tutatalo umvelayo. Xambi songeni lena wesitube ni panchenkena koskasi. Odoa kele nisa utinabo ononchal. Unonchalwa kwa apukona? Ukwe ipinge nmen?
Eh, Alfred, eh, Bizana.
Ukono ononchalwa se Bizana apa?
Do we have a social worker from Bizana area here?
U, u pi. Ukona na. Palisutatalo ufuna abama gawa yeke paku ye. Senjaznizindo yeyitengoku ye besivumele nemusi. Naba ononchalo. Ngoba kazo uyazika lokasuzu uyazma. U pi u banu. Masie kui.
As we move.
Ikamala kosfunu ilandelela astale nunonchalwa zakuenzani. Wenu ngbanke.
Ikamala amdi ngukomo nonzwa kazi.
Nonzwa kazi.
My name is Nonzwa Kazi Kommo.
All right.
From Bizana.
Okay. Ma kaku landele nunonchalwa yekuwe. Ma kaku chongukelipi yekuwe. Masie mama, masi. Indenzelinkizuwe kunginto yalape Alfredo. Kanji itinda utinga indoba. Eh, utata, utata umlenzana. Wa yesa kuba, gumtu okoke la. Abantu abadaala ngakumbe klinginke yenu ekuprofis ngoko.
Eh, it, I feel very concerned because Honorable Lenzana used to lead the section of elderly people.
Utata umlenzana wa yenguche person wa buglingin. May his soul rest in peace.
May his soul rest in peace. He used to be the Chairperson of the elderly people in this region.
And wa yeytanda ndinda zongis pakamiso zel. Wa yesu tualaa anyuke nazu azisepisho.
He used to be very active in this area. He used to take all concerns and direct them at a provincial level in Pisho.
Ushaje bamba lo masiti hamhamje.
Let us be brief, straight, go straight to the point.
Emkosika kulu mani bulisa. Bongabantava sisi inindi city. All protocol observed.
I greet everyone and saying all protocol observed.
Mandi kale ngogupa sa umtehto oyilwayo.
Yes, Chair, I support the bill.
Mandi, ngene kakulu indyo kala enzonkena kuyo. Dingu mampele. Poswana, osuka ewini matigizela Mandela. Ogwe project ya banta ba dala eh bezongo by Kanyasa Old Age.
I'm coming from Kanyasa Old Age from Guineamandela.
Mampele Poswana.
My name is Mampele Poswana.
Ndi, indyo kala eman tetengayo. Ndiso landela ngezinye. Paya eh Bizana snetchallenge inkulu. Eh, yokunga sebenzeki kakulue ononchalwa abasebenzekakuwe. Ngenayoba, gummane kuvala, winda o abasebenzala kuyo. Basika bantu bengaaleka. Benka ba fuma ni ngoba abananda wibasebenzale strike. Winkabe funizindo eh, sis, esabmitwayo kubo. Bama paymka kweni esabmitwe kona ngoba. Eh, snetchallenge eh Bizana eh rent. Eh, mangadisa yo.
We, we have a problem in Bizana whereby we have a shortage of social workers and they don't have a proper facility to work on. Eh, most of the times, they are compelled to go and register all people on the street because of lack of accommodation to work on.
Sitela ba iparlamente mayke isbonelele. Eh, ulomba ononchalwa basen Bizana. Abasebenza pansi kubukwai bana pansi benkungu.
We want the government to intervene eh, on behalf of the social workers from Bizana because they are working under severe conditions.
Paya eh Bizana guko eh, indao egungambi iguzo. Like lendawe ndisuka kuyo mmna. Eh, inamakwazana paya kotoa. Agukomkato. Ongena yo uyagla project ikuvaleki lumkakopela paya women road.
Eh, we have a problem where in Bizana whereby the elderly people are not able to be accessed because of the poor road infrastructure. Even in that project I represent, it's not accessed.
Indao entu kuyo paya.
Yekindawu kui kamala yu kui pindawu.
In multi-location under Amangujan.
I am, and I'm living in multi-location under Amangujan.
Engus.
Eh, umzekelo alendo nditeta yomkako. Eh, twenty nineteen kure iswe uko ko osem dala.
As an example, I'll start an example. In twenty nineteen eh, there was an elderly woman of ninety years who was raped in that area.
Kuagusep sukuwa kunzimbasio fikimkakweni simsa espete la kenwa emeko. Ya se mka kweni kunetile.
It was very hard to take her to hospital because of the poor road infrastructure and it was at night and it was raining.
Ndi kela ba ndipati sele parlamente uba kwezi project esina zozo banda ba dala. Masikesenzelwe indo ebul, e, ekugulima. Sibiye le, sibenembe u esisikala wenzelbaka loku. Abanda ba dala bakwazu exercise akwenzanda o. Sibenazo izindu esisfuma na ulike ifet. Si ngakwazu kui ifuma na esdolo. Si kwazasi ikupeki zivande esisenzelwe holmende.
We want the government to assist us, to have proper fencing and also to actually help us to be active in other, other cultural activities as well.
Ndi kela ba ukpati sele, le, le, le parlamente. Paya kwezalali zestala kuzo. Amanze, anmabile opa itokele kialukwakona.
We don't even have eh, water. We have a water shortage. It's been a while since we had an assistance or provision of water.
Di kalukpati sa iparlamente ibe price projecting. Sibenazo itenk, esbanazo zamanzi. Uba bayasafari sakakuu ok ke giva. Egyoka amanze mlange nksineke enagelele oko oko.
The ke givas are suffering because they've got to go and fetch water from the rivers in order to care for the elderly people. That is why we are asking for the government's intervention.
Kuko amakwazana paya. Glangi nseli kuyo. Abange nazo indao zoksala. Upaula itokezana. Li, li, li sala pande li abonakala futi. Ah, alikuseleganga ekstale nikwalo. Ya ikasa indo eti. Ma kubekona i, 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 izindo ezifana. Ne, nezinhu ezakele umdo mdala. Aydegelepa wenzelba azma ukuselekile lendawazelikuwa.
We must have facilities that are secured for the elderly people so that they may not be at risk.
Ba amakwazana esiya ekliniki oka nyespetela. Angena u siks. Ngosiks ayabu ya agapatanga. I treatment ya o ngena yukwala amakwazana agakwazi. Nga ikasa indo eti. Masbekona i, 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 indo eh, 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 te, eh. Ekusela amakwazana. Kwezanda oze snetkliniki ngoba. Ubuya engakanga ipati treatment ya.
There is lack of medications in the clinical. Give an example. Sometimes elderly women will go to a clinic at six o'clock and come back with nothing because there is no medication.
Paya eh Bizana siathela i old age. Eh, isi mosakona sipika kakulu emakwazaneni. Akwatsala odoa angakiwalapesi sinapachwe kakulik baba zukulani ba.
Yes, in Bizana, we've got some elderly women that are totally don't get nutrition and they are abused by their grandchildren.
Sitela i oko oko. Le mali abuba ifuma na yo. Ie kamkam itanidniu kambooba. Aydenzeli ndo abako oko izindo amakabisungoku. Anyuki lena ogu ukyaka uniwale two thousand. Aydenzeli kwa ndo. Ubuya oko oko. Engakanga pache kwa ndo kwa ngoku. Kona oko kwa banke zanga. Etinga kwa imali kwa nde.
Eh, there must be an increase eh, of this attractant because two thousand is not enough. Some of the elderly women were not able to come to this gathering because of lack of funds.
Di kela i, imali yes, yes, I pen. Go, 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 ke givas.
We want a stipend to be offered to ke givas.
Bade na ye ukacha ngangomsebenzwa ke. Ba ukala Monday to Friday eh, hamba emezini. Enesa oko oko. Ubonba umsebenze. Awyenelanga le mali.
They work long hours. They go from, visit from home to home. And the fact that the money is not enough to cater for the needs of ke givas. Therefore, I stand here to request that there must be an increase on the money or funding that is directed to ke givas.
Oko ke bela.
Lastly.
Hello, Gemma. We are here from Osmo. Yingoma ekukulela ibaxala pansi. Ongeka itaibi besivumele ne indoba. Ka unakwazanga uknikwina kwayo keta. Oka nisindosakozini. Ungazengeni sakula tafile. Ngoba kalkaluwa abantu kutala bela pa kwa sexi. Su vilumtwe induwa sembizana unzimakaku. Londo undenza indoba nifunu ipenla nmenge nyamukulondo sembizana. I reportiwe indoba eh Bizana ikonimhaki. Ye office. Si fumele si papesu. Futi sa ilandelela pemazansi. Watwa ononchalwa. Ba, basasebenza kui office etwa ikasasa. Umtwe imbupetwe. Odoa kuya bonakala kuswene ezukonjeni. Mayela na tatalo oka nyumama loe pilteki. Ke ngayo kungavisi sani. Gumtwe induwa renti njengu sijayi bomba si ayasi. Odoa, siyesa kela indoba. Abapati. Mabai kaulesi indoba bakangele enye indao. Enoti kuvunyelwa nengayi. Kwa bonakala futi unzima. Inongo pele indao eh, eh Bizana. Indo ngayenza. Ube te umama loa unglo nchalwa sembizana. Msha umbi, ndidenda tiku H O T. Kangela umdo shalembizana ononikangelela so quick, quickly indao. Asosin. aso sembi zana mosindia yasikwala from the eastern cape, ingaba kona indawo, forlumsu zuksa kuswene ezukunjeni, genda ba ye rent. So, na ungu nchalo, kabisana naye, ubo, ati say ipo ngapezulu, naoe kuba ukuwa zukumile uki, na antipiliti kwama bani. Ya wazumkubika kwa usen kunjeni, unayo indo etzala yo. Enti kesi ya fuma nati ba, makuswane ezukunjeni kwa bonakala mifika, ulonkolo ngana, ndiwa yase pizana. Koranke kendi vye, ndiwe, kuswa, bapa lisabandwa zatwe, ba sume befuna zatwe. Ina tiga ti ba funu palezi, nisindu esina paleki, yu nchalo. Mabaha, bebaye kwa za offices akasasa, ngesfumelewa, ba zabane ngelitile, yu kwa zwa, ba bo ne indoba abantu, baba kellele, kama nse, nkelala nanap, kuswa uphaka munu nchalo wa sembi zana, aycho ap, ni veka, bani ba fuma natin, engos ma, ma thopake, oka nyu uni kesela le, opo bele indo ya, olandela.
Eh, next eh.
Ya obasi sumite tama.
I support the bill, Chair.
Engos ma. Molwenba tande kayo molweni. Oh, nditelu frolo, skatifon, nditele iti, diafi kango, un, di la xlegile ndato, docha spetle. And asba kukue.
Si kolele ma, si kolele.
Nanti suka, apemontelef, ku project ukongmasonga.
I am coming from Mount Ely, from Masonga, any project, and I want to apologize for coming late.
Sni nasili yu skulu ba tande kayi, si ambesungutala asa, asana ndao yo xta, ufika apa, ukesa leka bandwa, baby, si uku xna kwe, nu, nipide, nu mkena, kadinawo, wa nindawo, kobe ilo, si kadinawo.
We, we would like the, to be built a center because we go from place to place and we don't have a permanent center. And as a result, these tags, they steal our food and other important items because we don't have a permanent center to stay on.
Snia yo iya, desaini kon, fulmenta ya biwa, asana wa mani.
We do have a yacht that was provided by the government, but now we don't have the capacity to do agricultural activities.
Si akela fulmenta angasilima, angasiliban, si akunu kui kubeleki project yetu.
We want to continue with our project, but want assistance from the side of government.
Engos.
Engos kama.
Mamela ma, nifuni indo zulima, nyakwansulima ngoku, nibatala kanga. Si akasha mdana, si akasha bafan. Alright, umama ukapha zoleka, kama ndiwa zwa. Si amdiamas na. Yeke, ilendo ke ngoku kfunelelo, umtunbu cheta yo, su ulkisele kuyo sitmakaka, ambele, i, i, es, ilenda, akayo uchekisma, indona ngani, nikayo, na kota kani kasha, iwa ndani, kasha ngandu. Nikasha ngalema, ni ni kwa fulmenta, ike, ni. Unchalo mdam, unchan. Si zauti ni, kwa ba si akuna, na kubuliima. Alright, umamu zoleka, ah, nchamba kazo ibuza, lendondi buza yo, ni zauti kani swana yee, ni tetena yee, eh, uno nchalo we nu, anitalele, lendoni, kriin bani ya itela, uyazutumeli sijalo, kunda, winda, uyazutumeli mchakulu, uyazutumeli ndiwa zitunyelwa. Masivumela neke mama, palisa pa, i kamala, kone number yako ye phone, si zomnika umamu zoleka kaphalo. Snia zonka, misindzo zulima, si ya biwa, kulumso balo, si xalapa, si mja, si xalapa ya. Alright. Alright, sanu ziba izindo, mabaka zibi, ababandwa nisindzo zabandwa batala bitun. Mas si reporte pa engosin, isneki se lenda yu ya, babanzu, ni baba bila ba bantwa. Ni bayeka lendoni ngaba bamba. Si zoba inka ba si la, baba, baba ni kasa. Eh, eh, si tini ke ngokti. Mamela ke, ufuna siyo baba bamba? Nanga ma polisa mniangu, ufuna siyambeso baba bamba? Ayan, gi si bamba, no. Oh, si zauteta na, si zauteta na, kodwa kani bonakade na. Alright, alright, engos ma. Mas isole nji, niya imamela kebe tun, niya, mas mameleni, niya ibona ke ngokbanisfakinaki, nifuna spesu, kodwa kaka litsina kodwa. Uki, si sate tanabo, onisaba, eh, kawi, yekeke mama, ayake saba kala umamu zoleka kapalanga, ba bu ise zonge sazi. Sa reporta na kutatundo si, utatutele, ukutaka enze opo, kapakalali, ambeke helicopter, atonge sindzo zenuzbiwe, ambeke helicopter nga, be mchade. Si zasopot, namzbiwe, si malasospa, ni siya kulelisa, asaswa mas tini, mamela kalo kusivumelene, indoba. Bitun, mama, iya payita fili, nupalsika malak, goba ama polisa sawatumela kuwe, uyobonisa, ay zispot. Uis, ubonise, upaponise, yonge lenda o. Nonchalo, upansikwako lo, amo utacha indo i kamala ke ne number yako sa iPhone, akasose kalo kundu si ese apa, ayenda wena ngayasi, fineka ya ngo, kuswa be amba no social work, kangelo place. Mama ngoku be, oh, kona se fakwaki.
Following, following.
Mas isole nji.
Following boom, akulu, notam kulu, stella si zole, si mamela si nisiti, si akela, engos.
Ah, ya tati ndambu, landwa cherish, ya bombandi ekile, nju lus, ya niega, nyangola apa, alright. Si kuto le, ilenda bagama me funu senza, iho ho zabandwa.
Ipamame, kaka ba dekosi esu. Eh, ih, akame na, ukonge sa, esindwe, nipobanfazu zlanda. Di suga eda baku. Ikama, ndi ngumamte, ngumampe lazo.
Eh, my name is Mampetu, eh, by clan Mampela, I'm coming from Tabangulu.
Project, ipani, umpisi. Umpisi.
My surname is umpisi.
La aman, igenka le ngugu lela, kona sanibuchwe, kisangakwane, tuanwa ketabe matat, tuwa be mseto, nido kuma.
Indeed, I'll be brief because I've been actually given a directive to say very few points that are important.
Mas isole nji, nitun, maba zola bandwa etaweni.
Eh, ndukupaga menayo, ukonge sa, kuisi, eh, kuisi, esichonge nena.
I am coming here to add on the issues that we are facing.
Mna, utala labandwa batala, beni nasitelo solo, si piwe, amanzi, kuma ka esixala kumo.
Eh, my request is that as elderly people, we would like a provision of water in our centers.
Asenzelu, ukulumende, isbonelelo samanzi, umseke lo, njo bangu, ngena, ubusi, si soko laka kuu, nisabandwa batala.
Yes, as we enter the winter season, we are suffering as the elderly people in those centers.
Umniya, rekutile yo, laga lafikupaliso, niswa kulumende kutua, umtuzo upaliselba amanzi, abela ke yati.
A while ago, there was a project that was issued by government to say that you are going to have a provision of taps in your yard.
Ya, uyake londo, ya nyamala.
Msakulu.
Andi bazimta ma bantuwa, ba ebafika, beba bandwa, nba tisipali, se nukwete, ba ambeke, andi akwa ya isuka.
I can't give you the identity.
Mamela ke, msa mbidi, ukwe ipilan, mas fuma nilali le ya.
Di se bomvin.
Eh?
Eh, bomvin.
Bomvin.
Eh, bomvin.
Eh, tabangulu.
Si zau, bam councila wakope bomvin. Aumazna.
Keba wakomba.
Keba.
Mister Keba.
Eh, Mister Keba.
Si zambuz.
Kodwa, ayenka da, mdu, Keba.
Eh, but now Mister Keba was not yet a councilor at that time.
Ubi ngoku okoyo, ngoba mama wa, umtunbu wa amanzi, lendobe sisi ti, si lusiswa, benge kwa bamba kwa maspa, umtunbu wa kwa maspa, si wa hambi, si la matangi, sawa beka kuis, ginwengi, winda, winda, ay emezini, kodwa safumanse indoba, abandwa na, ba xala ngalanda wye teba, avusa amanzi, abanya kulendikala kuyilali na, ba ya wahopo za ngemela ngupsu. Kodwa ngoku sato ngitebu, ezatangi, that is, i, i, ocho ocho, mas ba fake, eh yati, ni kwa angosi, oka niya kwa swonda, oka niya kwa teba, lo, unga zo ucheke, itukwenzelba, nifuma ne, amanzi, kufuchani, ma re, lendondi funu, eba, okoyo ngoku, si zo pegi sa ngoku ye, si cheki sheke, ngoku mtu nkuwa amanzi, ba, bangenza njani, nisondezelu amanzi, goba no mama lunga pambi, uyvezili ngagi, yo shoto lo amanzi.
Eh, winchan, ndondondo na kutabi ya fi.
This counselor is new in that position.
Indawo, ganditete la kuyo, tinwa ndibasuzu. Ulan da o.
Uya fi.
Ose mchalo nukwena.
Niya kubuchaba ke, na ti si fiki zolo, kodwa sfanele si sebenze, enti, si buzo ze mniya ke zule, mbize, jake kam. What man?
What aid.
What aid, alright.
Mna ke mda wendi zaku, kulando, eh, unai twende nukwenaayo, se kuchiyo ngamakosi, inga ase, ka, amakosa etu, asisondezese zinbuzo, zalom teto, woku kri, wa kama kefega, sungoba, ulucha ngoku apa aluko, ibe lulo, olenza, ulxane, eslali, inga asa ke ngoku mbiso, ibiso, ingosi, ubekona ke ngoku amakosa se ukulumende, akatissa, doguka kekaka, mikwa ma kwa zana.
Yes, indeed, Honorable Chair, eh, it is clear that the traditional chiefs are the ones who are closer to the communities. And also, we've got these young people who are terrorizing and abusing the elderly people. Therefore, would like to have an imbiso that will be called by the traditional chief so that these issues can be ironed out and be addressed because the elderly people are affected.
Eh, indawo yo kebe.
Lastly.
Es clinic, si asitela, isibonelelo, sokika, asibonelelo ukulumende, i clinic is kona, kodwa, bayasabenza bantwa bakan, i indawo kakeka, inga biko, ubekona, ukulimala kome depsuku, funaka ubo tuamba, indawende, goba kalkalu, sisese lali.
We would like to have doctors that are located in the clinics so that they can do a specific task because many times people get injured at night and you find that there is no doctor who will be able to mend that person.
Okay, abakwaha, ba be, ba be kuis.
Ba be se, kela isibonelelo.
Clinic.
Ba be se clinic.
The doctors must be at the clinics that are in the rural areas.
Alright, naleyo mama, ubawe, ibawe la ke, nipentule ngukumile, ba, eh, kanoko, ubuya kumbula, pambi lipa, lotikta, bezivunwa i clinic etu twenty four seven, nupsuku ne min, amanesi ehala, paya i clinic, asesu. Yati, indo yoku, kwenkuluwa komanese z clinic, noku petwa kwa bandwa na, bantu ngopsu, ninga fumelali, ni ni obandu ela, nbande. Kuwa bonaka lukulumende, ubeka abantu, abantu wa na bantu, es trengi, ya peliso indo ya se clinic ka twenty four seven, watwa ma kuvale, go five. Kufunaka nikale apelali, ni ni be, mmo, ni be ne sange silkuni, eku, eku, eku kusele, ababantu ba kweza clinic, ka ufuna nokwaha ngoku, baye pa, inganzi makaku, lasfunu nikoki sa apa, kodwa city, ezat clinic, noko masbe nayo, injela indoba, kuseleke, si zo kwa zwa, ni na ke ngoku, ni oyakale, enti ke, asana yeye baleta indo bingela zindi, i ambulances ya shota, ubanzi, kushota kwa okwaha, apa espete le, matzika ni, so, ubone ke ngoku ba, isafuna ke noko, sitle, utata opetayo, azambo okwaha, because matabantu, asana yeye lali tinasi, okwaha basuka, mazu ngamazu, abali smatela yuma basonde, sendisi tukuti siyitati lele ngagi, yoku ba ma bonele, ri wesle, ye sipetele, ekutoa, amakangwa fule, kilabantu balala, please kwepe, akwa be ma mubuno ifota, kaulele papanzwa la petu sfoate, uyufu bisena pambi. Ufane na ba bandu bebe faka, bandwa ndeskar potin, beni bo ni lele, ka kusonde, nu M E C, ebuza, kteni faka, bandwa ndeskar potin, bayaka nyela, matkange bafa kwenka, so, samoku ti ke mama si vile, engosi siyabulela ma, eh, opo be la ke ngoku ma kese na pambi.
The last participant.
Zilungi social workers, nitun.
The last participant and thereafter will hear responses from the social workers.
Eh, ngatunja. Eh, manditina nganga, nyence basa.
All protocol observed.
Andi sibasa bamte, esmisi indo steti we apa.
I will not be long.
Kodwa, eh, leyo bani sakhe, leparamente siya.
We want to have centers that can be built.
Songe, luteta yu ngu Rebecca Tuluana.
My name is Rebecca Tuluana.
Es nenjongo lunch on club.
Ats nenjongo lunch on club.
Ku kintu ndizo yenke, sabla mama be tetan espete la sasenmatatye.
I want to add from what was said by an elderly, by an elderly woman from Matatia,
Inova yena edeteta.
Regarding hospitals.
Inova edeteta wondi wa yena.
Maybe she was speaking on rumors.
Mna, ndizo tetan ke, ndwenze gapum.
I will talk from experience.
Le waiting room ya, atetanga yu mama, inga sans kweza security.
The waiting room is just, is not far from the securities.
Si, eh, si, eh, si security, eh, si security.
It's us now who are guarding the securities.
Because the waiting room, inga sans kweza security.
Because the waiting room is just beneath the house, the office of securities.
Is kada nunga, zinge, yena, glenku, si kuyo kan.
The thugs, they come and attack us in the waiting rooms first.
Eh, eh, si security zinhen, ta, ezolondo ba kfunelba, zisolu si.
The securities are nowhere to be found, whereas they are supposed to be looking after us.
Ndilala pake, unyaka onke, inolande la, inolande la.
I, I normally come from Umthata slip over there every time.
Ay, nchanga ke mama landa, ozala kuyo, goba senka la.
Apo, kupa.
Taylor bequest, ematatiye.
It's called Taylor bequest in Matatia.
Usuka emtat, kuye ematatiye.
Nisuka ematatiye, le, nditunyelwa ngoku kakeha, emtat.
Oh, so ksemthata apa, wenzel.
Ksematatiye de apa, wenzel kalando.
Okay.
Nifige ndonza le i kalpo, akosu kwenka, ndibadi ndjo, ngosu kwenka, ndanjo kwenza, operation emtat.
I can't forget the day where I had to go for an operation in Umthata.
Ni yokupa isbeleko, ndaguya, nditakekeke, ndinjado, ndalala kula waiting room, imi, imi tumbo, ipana mazile kum.
I had to go for an operation on the womb and my situation was so dire and I was vulnerable at that time. Everything was exposed.
Right, alright, guba nonka yasiyo isbeleko nitun. Si asasmo si isbeleko, ndoni ngoku mni namasikis, si te umchakule, umchakule, alright ma, si vile lenka ba ye espete le, nchamki suikaku, umama na yuti wa yelele pansikwepetu, wa yepa, akatete ngondi, so si ongeza ke ngoku si ti, iya kaka nyan, indo ya bantwa batala, bakatarele kanga, ematatiye, si vilele yo.
Oblaneda yo ke ma, ndiya, beni kera, kila mtetu ilwayo.
My other request is that regarding the bill.
Mse ona, usia bonaka, daliso aba, si wo iwe ukulume.
The bill looks good on paper. It shows clearly that the government cares for the elderly people.
Si kera, inga kunga, tokwe si si indo, kufa kwe, olulu, chalube kona, luchale na, trumame, edu bakwa, ninga.
In one of the provisions that I proposed, that the youth must be included so that they can listen and hear things that have to do with elderly people.
Baye kusukume.
They must stop abusing us.
Goba si ti, kwa si senta zetu, kasi kuyu go ndale krosali, si faga kwa si zustalela kus, basike ma langa, bakopos, baytate yongo.
When we come to do groceries, they come and. When we come to do groceries, they come and take everything that belongs to us, I thank you.
Alright, eh ibisi steti sokobe la, elsie. Kotoa bantu ba dal, masizame kuinki ngalala kuzi ngosieva bituna izbuye la, kwanjungu, isa utetana, banya balandila yonge sans. Siza utetana yeno mama u, guban kade nuno sand. Unos, unosan, uno sand, lungama ma senoswa, upana kwe kwa national. Umsawo, lungama umsawo, siza utetana yeno mama umsawo, kubizo imbizo ana kuinki ngangenge. Gobaga lokubetuna, ngke sisuke kapa, sizo ukata, kua kua matzikan, okanyekupi kupi. Okanyekua kui ni mandela village, kufanele bantu ba se kitali nbangetzani na bantu ba dal. Yazi ndibu kelen do, apa nibuyanga nenokwe zindo, ezni eni, ene kela wazizo. Kotoa ke kuba asisa ngakuzo, size kui si xomelo, somteto, itilondo, siazipala ezini sifaka misai si xomelo. Siz, kabi luzipala ke ngoku, onu ntaloke, njongo ba, benga zipfuma ni ezinyingelo. Ule lungelo lenu indoba, ka uzee etulopinu zo utenga mashonshoa muka nyuzo fuma ni pe. Ke ningene panisi report, yesitanga tinenzaskelela nitunonxaloz banban, ndi reporti linwetele kange nza ndonga. Sila pokaloko, tinasi ngaba sipekesa, bona, ubaba yenze lendo, bayasheluwe yoko, ba bona, bate. I here, I beg to apply, matilo boni. Tinasi keli apa sifaka miseluwe izan, nini ubaha mbani ke no smell, woku ke kameba fika ezizi indo, nini ngante kyo kuso. It's fine, right, ya bona galakulche yonki ndo apa, so social workers, kotoa kwen, sia vumela na nanti, sini wenyos. Ma isn'ati siyobi zimbizuan, gubangesa nikyalwa kwa ngoba ndo ana beni ba bespa bizile apa. Kebe chiliza ngoku be nikyalabe tiniwe yo yonge ndo sijeta. But lendri ti, abantu espasini, abantu espekele, abantu esbankini, mabani kwe i priority, that is maba. De kwe mkala, mkutse, ekti, pa weyeke. Futi si vile na kwenyinda windoba, noko ne minyaka, ma inga tiye kuse vintino eighty years. Eh abantu ba dalaba, noko ma yife kose sixty, indo ez nati ngoku zmeleba, zi foli shakulo ndo yonge imechwini. Njenga bantu ba dalas, sia prouditaiswa. Manjicho uba kulumende, uyayizama lando, gubu buya kapelas, tes akona ne vengile, ezinika abantu ba dalai sapulelo. Ubao utekantika ungena, wa atelo, okanyewa kupi aydiako, unasapulelo sfuma na yo, kui vengile eztila, notisonke. Ay betunasana mntala ke vengile zo my friend, nditetik vengile zama mpe la. Ezama mpele vengile de proper one, sifumeni sapulelo mna. Naanike, ninalo ilunge lo kani yekue zitulopana zgulu. Kui indo eztila, uzufmana isabelo ka utenge i kuyinyaa, le five friends, denzo mzeke. Tu, divakalpshungu, kani maneni thaza apa indoba, nifunezino i moto apa. Uya yazi la, ndo ifuni moto, ndikengisa abantu, abakuba zekleyo, ngoku ba de city, nothing without us, itinle. Nothing about us, without us, ninkengisa lone. And even today, ezamoto zikaba la lazonge ni willeche, usenzi ma uku zifuma na, siheba apa nomama masang. That, oh haute, niaba boleski finbe naso. Kotoa bona pa zipiwangongo wangunu, ba abafele ba donaite, bate sia holi sa, ngale moto. Ibe konake ni boleski fini, tina apa, kule upeko sinayo, i kutwa i i i istenkebu, aska kwas ngamo banaso ngamo. But, na aba abantu ba kat department of social development, maba pendu le zipimoto sauti. Ay okalo, benisicho apa, baba sniku kujia bayaspili sa bayastin, i kemu kubongo baba zo pendula, bani kaneke zo bazokaulesi sa ba pendule. Sibebele ngalubuya kunzungulu, ngoba ukokele likandelo labanda ba dalaya na, achwa indoba, nishielelele, nishielele. Basameke batati kesa, fanele sifume apa ngutu. Iskolo zaba nduana ka zipuma, zipume se sisonde la, sizo ukwazi, ukape lingomo no yozbuyisa, sikapele zbuyesese kotuki. Koronje ama fuchani ngawa ukuti. Ingela, enite koko, nenipaka misa izi ndo ezipili layo ngayo iya mangas. Nginngi ngi 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 zia shiana, bate kwa from, ekale ninjesi kala, nipaka misi zindo ezibaluli kilaye. Ukuba utekantika ushierkelue, wangakwazui pakamisindio ye projectiako muhitu niwutu, okanyewa wangakwazuteta pembokwe. Akula shwambeneko ngakfelewa, nanti aita fili sa pa umtendu wako. Nifunuxala panske ngoku, dinikele konu ntalugi tunani, makazo oli chankizi yo, ak breakeli ice, akisa indoba itini indo. Ngakwazizi indoba ziveza yo, ngos.
Cries to the panel led by the Honorable Lumvana.
Ndibuli se kumakosa onke apa kati kuetu asuka, paya na eh legislature, nabana, saba national eh department of social development. Na se kondoemi, nalapa eh districtini ya se Alfredzo.
Cries to the officials, starting from the provincial legislature, national and the local ones from Alfredzo.
Ndibuli se nabanda ba dalaba pakati kuetu, eh entbona ubana uni ziluabo. Ba kuisenda ezazuayo apa kwa social development, na banyeki aba ngasuki kuso, na bondia babuli sa.
And cries to the elderly, some of them are from popular centers here at Alfredzo and even those who are coming from those that are not known, I'm great, all of you.
Ndibuli se namakosa walapa Alfredzo, nomtu ondo koyo, eh unkoskatiko, ke lisi kamalaga isukresti unkositu, amen.
Cries to everybody from Alfredzo and the wonderful man.
Di go nomtobo, mki lani, ikamalam.
My name is Nomtobomki Lani.
Di kokela apa kwa social development, as i district director, ya lapae Alfredzo kwa social development.
I'm a district director of social development at Alfredzo.
Ndibulele kakulu ngale session, ye public hearings.
I thank the session of the public hearings.
Ndibulele ubana, gokube di mameli apa, kuyegwa kazwa, eh ge support, kule kwe zippublic hearings, zele older persons bill.
As I was listening, I heard people mention the support of the elder persons bill in this public hearing.
Ndikoli se sithalo, gubana beni tu nyelo kwenyinda nganiso, ekwa ye department, dijonye pakati kotoa ngivile uni zilesindo esbekiweyo. Es sifaka niswe ngaba nduabetu abatala balapa Alfredzo.
I want to tell my apology, chairperson, because I arrived a bit late, because I was referred to one meeting of the department. Eh but I found some of the issues that have been mentioned by the elderly people who have arrived.
Indo endi bambeleyo, eh, ndisummarize is that, ezindozonge zelelwayo, zingamene, unyenengejongo, ya le older persons bill.
What I could pick up as I was listening, I was trying to summarize, many of the issues that has been touched by the people are related to the peoples of this bill.
Which is to make sure that the provision of quality services and necessary protection by a society towards eh older persons. And the community base eh and residential care for older persons.
Ez malunga ke no, kachalelo, endikeso labanda ba dalala, lulundu chikelele na kuma ziko abachala ku.
Ndifuna okubulela, xalinga pambi li indoba na, eh abantu ba dalaba, balapa. Batetile, futu ba iteta inyaniso, yendo eyenzua, lisabe la kwa social development.
Eh chairperson, I want to thank the elderly people did make mention about the things that the department of social development is doing for them.
Isabe, lezo pushi sololundu, leline, la masebe kaku lumente, abekiweyo, episale nukuse angete, abantu. Ava, abasembuzekileyo, nabantu, ava, valerap, abantu ba fneke bengatiwe, abantuana, abantu ba dalala. Abantu, abakuba zekleyo, o mama, enjalonjan.
The department of social development is the department that is assigned to look after the poor, the vulnerable and including the children.
Ndiafunuku cho xalinga pambi li indoba na, eh, kuisindo ez, ez ezibaluwayo apa, ewo ukulumende wetu. Selekalile ukuzenza, andi, andi eyeyi, andei, ezindozangelele zelelwayo. But ndiafuna ukui pakamisa indoba na, eznyezindo ez kanga niwayo, ukulumende wetu, selekalisile ukuzenza, kunyena masebe akoyo, ekushaleni.
I will never try to underestimate the issues that has been raised, but I do want to make mention that some of the issues that they have raised. Eh some of the issues that we are already busy attending at the department.
Ukulumende wetu, ekushaleni, uyakweninisa, kunsabe nswano, ya masebe ake, ekushaleni. Nge programs, ekutwa i i I D P, integrated eh development program. Futi, ngoku uzestrongo eklinisa indo ebizongo ndoba na, y D D M, district development model, eteta ke one plan. Ne une integrated services ekushaleni.
Our department or government is emphasizing the issue of integrated plan. In their I D Ps, they come now with a new one that is called the, called the D D M. That is the way they showed how serious they are in wanting to strengthen or to emphasize the integrated services that has to be delivered to our community.
Namnjongo gubandi xeli papansi nditola kola indogaka, ndinoti lenndizausi kretisa, ezindobe zitetuwe ngamanyama sebe. Like imzeke lo, utetiwe ngespekele, wa department of health, wa tetwa o human settlement, kunto yezinhu. Wa tetwa engomaspala, umba wenfela, na manzi, njalonjan.
As I was sitting there, I picked up all the issues that have been mentioned by the people and some of them don't fall within our scope. But I do intend to pass them to the relevant departments, issues that has to do with the department of health, when they refer to hospitals. The issues that had to do with the water and the road infrastructure with the municipality and the issues that has to do with human settlement when it comes to the structures.
Indo endi yenai tanda, indoba na, omnia wabanda ba dalala utetileyo apa, uchilo indoba na. Imakisa bantu ba dalala, nunagekele kwa bantu ba dalala, ayondi maya kwa social development upela. Eteta ekweninisa indoba na, manyama sebe, makese, yolo ndo, the city, di di palepanso nosithalo, uchilo indoba na basa ureporta nabu. Ula level yakuwa national.
One of the speakers here or some of the speakers indicated that the issue of taking care of the elderly is not the problem or the baby of the department of social development only. And I, that's why I say I've noted those relevant departments and the chairperson also alluded to that. That's why I say I'm going to take those issues that has to do with other department and refer them to the relevant departments.
Indo endi yazi yo sithalo, is that apa e bukulumendeni, kule nzebe nswano, sienza yonama nyama sebe, pa kwa yakuwa human settlement. Ikona i polisi, ekutwa si special needs housing, apo tina singono ntalo, ekushaleni, ah, sitilishana nenaki abantu ba dalala. Ezindo ezifuna umtendu wezinhu, sia kwa zuku ukwenzai home visits, sifisela makaya, sipale i reporti, si motivate, si sapmete kwa human settlement. Ubone o human settlement, okanyewa maspala wendawo, eh ngeta elukaya elo ukuze, abantu belukaya ba fuma ne, umzeke lo, abantu ba dalala. Nabantu ba kuba zekleyo, nabantuana, abatheli botwa emakaya, denzo mzeke lo, wabantu ba kava shwayo sasa special needs housing.
Eh there's something under our coordination within these departments that we sometimes refer to, the special needing, need housing. Eh that is from the department of human settlement. As we do our work, in our scope of work, as we go visit these houses, there are times where we find that this household, this household needs some kind of assistance. Eh where it touches the life of the elderly, the people living with disability and the childhood houses. And in those cases, we do write a report that we motivate to the department of human settlement. That that particular family is in need of this kind of assistance.
Londo kesienza, kumkukumzeke lo, obonagalisa indi, indi baniseluano, ukuze, staku kukulomzi efumeni, uneto. Ibe indo ubana onga masebe apumelele, ayondo ye one mens show, umtu, abengati unga ndengo, lisabe elitile. Through working together, we are making sure that we make a big bank in our communities.
That is what we do in coordination together with these different, different departments. To make the life of that family a success with the kind of assistance they are supposed to be receiving. It's not eh eh work of one department, we work together as the departments to make the point that we do jointly to help that particular family.
Kwakona, umba we caregivers na wongo, mneye womba opaka miswayo eh apa.
One of the issues that has been touched is the issue of the caregivers.
Ndiafuna ukucho indoba, ukulumende, uyasin'ati sasi ngamasebe, ngamasebe, ukuze, si kwa ziku ngati sana ne caregivers.
I do want to say the government does assist us as the different departments that we should try to get, to assist the issue of caregivers.
Umzeke lo, abantu ba dalala, through i program yakuwa sasa, unayo i i grant ebizongo, ubana i grant in aid. Apo abantu ba dalala, bange duayoko ba, abantu ba dalala, ba shia shena, ba kona, ababa funa is special supervision, baye bange tiwwe. So umtu ongi salomtumdalala, uyakwa ziku ngati zelwa, afuma ne, indo kutwa i grant in aid.
Eh for example, we do have something that is called granting aid under Sasa, because the elderly people has different needs. So there are those who need a special assistance for them to, for the care that they need. So those kind of people who are, who deserve to get that assistance from another person, those people who are assisting them. Eh getting the kind of stipend from this granting aid.
Ndiafuna uku paula indoba na, nati kwa social development, njengo bana si kwa ziku ngati sa, i sendas abantu ba dalala. Sinest service centers, ez lap ekushaleni, ez konakoma spala bobane, base Alfredzo. And ipatchet esinikiwayo i seven comma six million, kulonyaka, footi.
As the department, as we are trying to assist our people with our ser, with our services, we do have eh eh our services in four of the municipalities under Alfredzo. And we have a budget of seven comma six million.
Le seven comma six million, inika inkaso, where's service centers, z seventy-five. Le seven comma six million, inika ingaso, where's service centers, the seventy-five, so nyukile ke sitalo, ulonya kupeleyo bezisave bezisaviti ebese fando.
From this seven comma six million, it's where we assisted all these centers, the seventy-five centers. There used to be seventy of these centers last year, but the number of these centers has increased to seventy-five.
Si sipalepansi sitalo i indeta ebikazwa, and ifunuba ibengati, and ivanga indobana i funding, eh weya acknowledge, but ayone langa, singa silesebe singane centers esingapezulu, ka ipatchet ka ini kwa, ayeye ikwazukonela, boonge abantu abatelileyo, futi unyaka nonyaka sia motivator to make sure indobana abandabatala bayangeto.
We heard that this grant is not enough. We've noted everything that has been said. I don't need to mention all of them, but with the amount of money that we have, we do try to assist all the centers. Yes, we do understand that the amount that they are receiving is not enough.
Enye indo endiipaulileyo ngo kundixeli pansi, ah ukusenzwa umtetu kukona indima ama gama esingesi, abalu lekileyo ayani ke amanza, afana no may, no must, fneka gengo kunane aningetise, songe apa sikona sisimamele, entengani indoba i komite nayo ipauli, ukukwenzela ukukweniseki sa indobana, ah indokfneka yenze kile, ngo kwenlizula abandabatala beketisa, bayitonge bati must, ukwenzelu obana uba ayenze kanga, ubekona eh iso shwayo, esenzek, esenzekayo, okanya ukulandele i provision, umas uyangetisa uba kulandele i izindoeza ongetisanana indobana eszindo mazenze.
In the process of formulating the legislation, there are certain English terms that are used like may and must. Some of these terms are strong, are emphasizing that you have no option, there's no option. So those words are also assisting in terms of, as the elderly that we should know that after a must, there should be a provision. So in those terms, it's very important that we take note of the language of the legislation.
Sia bulela simu social development kunyie nezinto espakani soyo apa, eses iti kases bizatina si intergenerational programs, simu social development, kwenzi service centers, sesi kweniseki se indoba na sia kutaza, nzebe nswano kumandabatala nabantuana banyenye, through indose storytelling, and so on, but namtsange, di funa nseke indoba na mi emphasize eh ulucha, indoba na madube inenge, londo esafuna ke eh ukawamlo se province, but designer program to make sure that it is also designed to make sure that it covers that.
We thank your input in this program where we have something that is called intergenerations. I've heard that you emphasize that the youth should also be involved in this legislation, and we also noted the programs that you are taking, you are playing, or that you are embarking on, like storytelling and so forth, all those programs you are encouraging them.
Umba we caregivers, kwa kona ukulumente unayo i program ekutwango expanded public works program, na lapaka social development, na yolo program.
On the issue of caregivers, there is a program of extended public works program that's where the caregivers fall under. We in this department, we also have such a program.
Di yabulela kukona nenda weye yakapaze.
Ay mamela ma, mamela social work. Eh si funu pinto, ya falenwa kozela, au tetizo nakulinda uba ibawe la, they want to know ukuba i caregivers that are not getting, okanya, that are not getting the payment, bazopatalo, yi kuzo ukwenzeka, I generalize, we do have that, ukwenzeka, why be abanyenka pataleka, abanyenka pataleka.
Okay, i caregivers, sitalo wam, sikona kwe program, jema nitisina seventy-five service centers that were funding in Alfredo, i caregivers ya patale, and also nabu bayichilo apa, indo apa yongezelele yo indobana, kasebe konendo the awards, and also the recognition of prior learning, nendo obana konkeswe amanan, otherwise, in the funding that we provide to i service centers esnaso, sia sia si patale, sia skupismatese, di afuna nokatisa indobana es NPOs, es service centers, sis kasa yo, aso kwa social development, si nonprofit-making organization ekusaleni, yole ndo ndibulela kulu, namtsange obana nipine nanikwa ne tuba lobani sitheteli, jengu sitalo bechilo nothing about us, without us, to make sure that izindo zenu si covered within this bill, i caregivers ya patalo sitalo, and ne service centers ya fana, jema nsicho indoba na senyuka, gogonyuka, ngo kwe additional funding, ulonyaka si fumeni additional funding, kwame nyenyaka sikesina ifumani additional funding, but through our monitoring, sibo one indoba na i attendance, we send asile ai fani na life funding, si sisa mukuluani under spending, ukwenzelindoba na imali ingachiki, singate enye ekutala ise kuni eh aplashleyo ukuse ikwazufuman, and then, enyenge pakani soyo apa, umba we old age home, kenyani sitalo ayiku old age home apa Alfredo, abantu base Alfredo, bayata eh bayitaza ekutala basenza isitelu, futi kweni game kuviselu Alfredo kwa kukona nompatiso, bayitaza, banao nomtsaba seskesaya sa ujonga umtsaba wabo, abanao payana award one, banao umtsaba basota ngo kwa kelu, so i department i ayazi, di afu ya nono kawama se province, uza ibethelela indoba na i department ite, through i infrastructure plan, because izindo ebukulumendeni zenzwa according to i plan, isoke ingene through i program, yakuwa program two, eteta nghe social welfare services under older persons, but the money, no infrastructure, so i issue old age home, yes, you are in department, it's not a new thing, kutala i tetwa amageli amageli, it's a matter of making sure that ye yenzeka, ingabingati i tetwa city makosa kupela, na goni ivelele, na lapaka basota benno pekeleyo bayivele i tetwa eh as part of the support sa the program. And.
Man pindendwa ngetisa abandabatala, kulentetaya ko, ikona i temba luba ingako na na i old age center apa, okanya, okanya aliku temba.
Benzati sitalo i temba liklikon, i temba likon, because imana ivela longi pres, it's a matter of reprioritizing within the department to make sure that it actually happens, whether, etangonsu yu departmentin, ah indofneka yenze kile, is whether the beneficiaries, ukalo mgenani kutwe low old age home isakwenzu, msam kutwe four twenty, four twenty-five umsekelu, otherwise, mnanti na lo i temba, because ogogo imana i tetwa, kutjongo imali.
Mamou, u tetwa kwa yagngetis, ayikona, awutino wammsambi twenty twenty-five isakwenzeka, ah you don't have knowledge on when can it be implemented, inga, ah unando mosanditisi angonyaka mali, ah kukon di twenty twenty-five ndenzu umsekelu, okanya, uba iko londo, sitallele siso uktilishana no emizi ba, ukeba ingako na ni ninja, masingati, zidetemba, kutali vela, kutali vela nyani, ngo kuminiti ngengo kutali vela kwa.
Sitalo, and ifunu ukuma apa nditete, ubukuti, nditi ikona ku twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, I will have to double check, because ukua kiwa kwa center, ukomegeka ku infrastructure plan, and infrastructure plan is a provincial office.
Na kutatosukipundu, eh kutenunga yeki atete, ubaga yazi na ya agayazi, so that si kome, sia zubasi za unnanti, singa.
Okay, kelo nikasitalo wam, with due respect, man, question jenda weye office, officers epizana genene banyanisile abazalibam, injengu ba uwitlasile nawo, ipizuka approachoro, i department, mene tlanganiso.
Tetana abonotimna tiza yazin. Mas mamela bazalibam bantu, abane ngaki pe epizana, mbizana.
I officers epizana bazalibam, inengatu, ivaliwe as we speak, usisa reporta na ku HOD, ku HOD wa ipakame, ayukalu valwa ulonyaka ku twenty twenty-three, mbeke yavalo na last year, wesu HOD, ayonaki i lula, because i offices kakulumente is ebensa, utiparet of public works for restructuring, so kwa kusalewe klo tlanganiso namdandi konan no public works ya lungis, last year, na ngoku ebepiziwe ulenlot no public works, eh netdepartment ya kon, as we are speaking, eh iproachment se kalile ukupatalo, eh kwe mali, uba ulenlot be tetanange builds electricity and so on, kwa vunyeloana etdepartmentin ba, isakwanga la le mali apa tal, iproachment se kalile, and the recent report and ifumeneyo, ili nde approval, ukuswana judepartin ka CFO, uze ulenlot apa talet, and then, ubekonumba we.
Mamela, jisama nentukunand, tukingba we na indoma wipendu le indoba, le proachment tustela klanga, ababantu aba yazi indoni proachment, ka ume apanga pambili, ukeba longte imbiwovu me office, unobunga tati nyangezisik, unobunga tatu nyaka wonge uyeku twenty twenty-seven, okanya uminyaka, okanya, ah ukosho ba wonga pelani, utalu yacho na uta ikoglu nyaka, kungokiya, and nibuyala pabila pilinga katatalo. Msakule, msakule, noba ukondo zalana nutatalo apa, masif.
Sitalo, eh i department, jema nsicho indobana.
Mas mamela bazali.
I Department of Social Development, ipes kwa o longte impi, jema indoba na akuzupela o six months, jema ngoku ingu July eh twenty-six, di netemba lobana, yao tukala o august, ube izindo sithakweli, oku ngoku indo ebedi palelo, malunga nalantanga niso, be kunungiswa, indoba na i office fulwe ama kosa akwazu upinde la pa, because ngoku asa ebensa from Sasa. Eh mister, ditela uso ngenena klanda weye program, eh at least nogon disamile ukuteta esalape district, thank you.
Thank you, Chairperson.
And ngweni ukwenza, any political statement?
I don't wish to make any political statement.
No kwa kiwa kwa le old age homes, kuba gokwaka lokunge kwezplanza ulonyaka mali, ayiveli kustwangeso, kuboseto sesabe indobana, sisa kwa.
Mamela tetanmbogweni na abantu aba funuva.
Eh, engosi sitalo, betunake ulonyaka mali esistwangeso so kwa kai i old age home, apa eh Alfredo, asiko eh kustwangeso ngubo, so kwa kwa ulonyaka, kodwa ke jengoba eh umamumki lanesi, eh isabe lisakonda kala ndokutwa feasibility study, nokuche kisha ke oku kubana imali ingafumaneka na pa kwa treasure.
This year, we don't, this is the building of the old age home at this municipality is not, does not appear, and yet, I do want to state that we are still busy with the feasibility studies, and also trying to check where the funding might come from.
Eh kukanga koke sitalo.
That is also, Chairperson.
Umtwe mpetwe, umtwe mpetwe, ah ukabiko kunyaka mali oskuo, jengu bani sif, unzima eh, akun, masinike ukonomu nonkala betunan, jichonda lamba ka imi kwenbi petwe ah, ak masinike u mama, we njuostuka kutipartman kwa social development kunyungun, ati ramram, tu i esinye, usano buya zazongo ba, zia reportwa, pakubo, esinye, angeti sekuso esinye, atetek kabalali, eh itesa, man timnikita esha, ndokaze, ah itandu tetwa, mtenfuchani, usai italeza, nse masinike itesa, simnikita esha nganana. Eh kutwa masu.
Ten minutes?
He, ya fange utiten, khamke titen utetalesa, sisa usala kwi ndaweskuzo bazali, abantu banchiselu, kholso bo bakeli ngan, kwegeka ke mama, ka andiyazka kuzele for ukwenzba, baba bantu we hwasaza, ukwenzba, baphume apa siambi, fneka siambile apa ngo, ngo tu.
Diabuli, sabantu abatala, diabuli, savu mama nabu tamku.
Greetings to the elderly.
Eh, umama mvala, the Honorable Chairperson of the Portfolio Committee for Social Development, Honorable Members of the Portfolio Committee, eh Honorable Member Masango, Member Mare, Member Mkhongo, Member Abrams, I want to take this opportunity to thank you for having led us in the manner in which you have throughout the public hearings that you have held across the Eastern Cape.
Kuma mama mvana usalwa le committee, kuma lunga lsonpekle yamba nawo, lunga lsonpekle umamare, umammasango, umamo Abrams, ndifuna utatayetu baken, ndibulele, ngentela, esitisa kobanga, yokusela, uposale konan, ubanezno ko, sikumela kunji.
But I also want to thank you for always keeping us on our toes.
Kona kintia funu kunibulela nan, kukusolo kunisina simi, ngentwa, nepaisi bin, nina ngamalu ngiparament.
I want to also thank the teams from the various components of the Department of Social Development, both national and provincial, and district offices.
Nibulele kenama karela isabe lezenkala, asuka kui makandelo, shuka shukeneyo, ukala ke kunjungulu kui podo, na kumaspa lango koi officers atuka atukenei.
And of course, the administrative support teams from parliament, because without you, we would not have succeeded in facilitating these important sessions.
Kunyanekala labasebenzi, abakasa i komite, abasuka i parliament, bage ngapandele kwen sebenzi swano nabu, okanya kwenkaso yabo, benka zuka azupumelela u ulomsebenzi.
I want to also acknowledge the presence of the various forums of older persons here this morning.
Tukua funa nova kalsan, nipoyamkuma karela forums abandabatala, esasuka shukenei.
As well as yourselves, older persons, I really want to commend you, you braved a very cold morning to come and be here, and you were on time, thank you very much.
Kunyanani ke ningabandabatala, ndifuna ukuningoma ubukohabi, inu, ukubani ziti, ne kui mwezulu, eh banda yo, kodwa nazipika, ya shanazo usala apa, tinibulela kaku.
And I appreciate your presence, because this legislative framework is extremely important for you.
Ndifuna ukubulela ubukobi, inu kubake, nukuboskokelo yalo mtetu, sitemelo, ibaleke kaku luku bumbe.
This legislation seeks to assist in terms of the upholding of your rights, your dignity... your dignity your integrity but more importantly it also seeks to ensure that you are protected and you are well cared for at all times
eh lomtetu sitemelo ke uzama uktunseki sa ukukuselo kama lungelo we no ukusonishwa kwe no isti masino u ukuselo kulwe no noktense kutigwe yo yonke imeko eganya indaweni pila kuyo nikusilekile
and I want to thank you for all the important inputs that you have made this morning
ndifuna ukunibulela ngalo longe ikalelo eli fe eli balu leklayo eni tenasukobi sa ngalo ngalemin
I am not going to comment on everything that you have mentioned and I want to thank my colleague for having responded my two colleagues for having responded to some of the issues that are provincially related
and isu somla kuzo songe kisdesesapaga ni swa apa kodwa ndafuna obulela utabam ababi nebebe sebe tetepam kwam ngembe ndulabatebas ngesela kui meba bebe tetapanswa
but I'm going to touch on a few critical issues that would assist you in understanding some of the sections of this important legislative framework
kodwa ndiafuna ukapazela imiba mba lwa engundo kwa ebalu leklayo klen kuboskokelo yalo mtetu sitemelo singa o esao ti mksambi inengeye te eku kwenina sekusu ulandelini
many of you mentioned issues around the abuse of older persons and I want to elevate some of the important issues that are linked to your concerns around abuse
abanisige kunibachechile kukupacho kakubika talala na usukunyazo kwa bandabatala ndifuna ke ukutapula ke isbyezimbala esesa uzama uphakamisa indela eh lomtetu oi kola selenga ayoke indaba yukutukunyazo kwa bandabatali
and that would cover the issues around killings the issues around rape and so forth
oku kuza ukuka ke ukubulawa kwa bandabatala ukutwenguluwa kwa abo konyane zinye isdesmanu kuyezesbachelela
so section eighteen A of this legislative framework speaks to the issues of abuse
ikan ndelo lunge eighteen eighty lomtetu sitemelo kesu pete yo utetangomba utukunyazo kukupacho katalala kwa bandabatali
where we explain specifically what abuse is so that you can understand if you're living in such circumstances it means you are one of the people that are going through abuse
utatessa ke ukake ika mali tukukumeza kanyo kukupacho katalala utetu tinina ukwenze la ukutya banyebini tu uskonu ukuti ukubanga ba usala pansi kue imeko ikumu la kulo lusobo longe utetu kuti umdu utukunyazwa
and section twenty eight subsection seven then speaks to the services that the department would then facilitate in making sure that you are well cared for you are protected and you are supported through taking your case eh via the justice system
ikan ndelo twenty eight kikan ndelo ana lestha ingapaku twenty eight lisama ukasukuti isabe amanyatulilo atatayo ukutunseki sa ukuti niyakuseleka inkuna kakfuneke umde ungesela wunye nesukuntleni even kobamkambi ete umdu achela siselo
and in that regard we ensure that you are prepared for court we get somebody that is going to support and assist you in terms of going through this process but also you are able to then go through the justice system using your own language as you get cross examined but you also don't speak in front of everyone you are you speak behind closed doors
eh apa ukubanga ba mksambi kwenze kile umdu omthala wachela siselo esbange luku timakayo faka ikala eli zoti leo veli zukuntleni kufikika sishalo ba umdu makamba yoko kankuntleni sine kubo ke tinasile isabe le kujuputu sishalo yoku bage kufuma ne kube koin kubo yoku tumdu pam kuba yonge ne ayonge ne kuntleni kube koin kubo yoku mlungi selela akwazu kui lungela imeko yoku ba ayen kuntleni kufuma ne lo umdu oso wa mnetisi wake oso basikalewa wake oso mkoke la amboni si amthase amboni suguti ke kuntleni funa ke kwenze ke nduri na ase ati klasikikoshwa makabesi kuntleni lomduwa kona ibengue on 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 yipuloho pakati kwako konyane nenguntla luko kana yo ukwenze la obu 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 kunsonkota kulu ndasenguntleni nobu za zabalo bunga menza kalisu umdu lawo lomduke abengu mlamleli pakati kwako konyane nenguntla na kau ngesela wunye nabako kwen kuntleni agmene se kanga ubekwe pa elu bala ubono kuwonke wonke ukfuneke we nute te ngesu kwenze sile yo ubutogwe abanga bantu manyeru ngabantu lom klen kubo yakso sa uba ungaenzwa longe falele kubekwe kubeba ubekwe kusini unikesela wunye nabako infishakalwe
and ultimately once this person gets convicted the person also goes into a national register which the legislation compels the Minister of Social Development to establish and I'm proud to say that process has commenced
eh lowoke umenzu obu beka kutewa funyazwa inejala kwa ngonango go umpatisa ono andu valwa ba lomdu amkia beke ika malakelipalue pansi kui register yoba luna uzbanuwa kwa bani ubanda kanyeka kujalelo kumi lakunjie ukwenze la ukutupeka pampile azwi na kai funi mskibenz azwi ukuti mskibenz tila kano lungelo kui yo genyaye sisenzo akapazela ya kuso ndiafuna ke ukutsige suguti lon kubo ke onakese ikali sile yoba umenzu obu be akiake kwe ika malakelipalue pansi
I need to also mention this Chairperson noting the heightened levels of reports of abuse in all its forms that back in twenty twenty one we came here as the National Department of Social Development led by our Deputy Minister and we engaged with um communities relating to issues of witchcraft and so forth and we agreed that we were going to facilitate the establishment of a collaborative structure that will then begin to look into all these incidents of abuse of our older persons which also included killings and harmful practices within communities that affected our older persons
esishalo genyaye yu yu kwa singa lembato katalala la nutukunyazwa kwa bandabatala konyaka twenty twenty one si esakialela ke L L C B kukokoke lo ke nguseka lampatiswa apo sibene ngoko apo pakati kwazo idewe spaga ni swa kukufuma suguti kuboko bandabatala bateba bulawe genyaye wabe cholo angokutku ikka kwa tereka sitibene apo sanen dibano yoba kube koi linke eli tibene yo lo esibenzisa na lokuwalasela lenkolelo i i ine kukubantu bakuti singa shanga bezana njanina yo safume la nubama kubekwe injela ukwenzo anga yo yoku kualasela nzulu lenkolelo wa ivela pina no no wa ngelawa yo no kubama kufunyano injela yoku ibulala lenkolelo inakubekeki inemaba kupatwa bandabatala bechona kubukui
and again I note that the issue of the minstess is of significant concern to our older persons and I want to say there is a petition that has been submitted by the older persons forum and I want to acknowledge the work that that forum is doing I'm encouraging all our older persons to make sure that they affiliate to the forum because that forum was established by the National Department of Social Development to serve as your voice so we want the voices within the communities to work closely with that forum so that some of your concerns can then be eh responded to promptly so the issue of the minstess has been submitted is on the table of the minister and eh it will definitely be looked into
kukoke uva ukabultilo vava nyukfuneke sietenzisiewe ukukualasela ke injela zoxanga bezana ke naliminge na tabatela batiwena yo eh kukoke iforam ebizo kwa by older older persons forum ekfunele kuti ke kuingalo ishala kuzo si zam esibene nowo amaziko na makonga alolo lusobo ebanga au akukuselela imiba yaba tabatala noktense kusutengatalo abandabatala bayfuma na genjela infanleklayo ukusela batinga yo eh loma tonga manjalo masibene nowo kuingi ngishtela kuzo ukuzi abekono pasikoma spala affiliate na kuikondo ase inpondo libati baniseke konyane ne tonga le na bandabatala le ikaswe longe amakonga njalongo awanosne ta ukungeti ukulwana nemie kwa yempacho katalala utukunyazo kwa bandabatala noktense kusukutaba bandabatala basukumana ingachalelo eh basfane lo ngendele lumbile
I'm looking at just two three things yes eh there is a I just wanted to assist in terms of the special housing eh the issue around old age homes just to indicate that there's a special housing policy that is led by our unit at national which is called risk oversight and integrity management and I would like colleagues to also get in touch with them relating to the establishment of old age homes because there is a partnership that has been signed for between the two ministers the Minister of Social Development and the Minister of Human Settlements
ndifuna ukunajake klen da wye meba ke eh si etc. ngazo nen dawesinge na oki amakaya bandabatala sikhali sile inkubo pakatoba patsa utukatukwene yo ukubane inkubo yokuza ba usanga bezana no mseli mgeni ololusobo loboba bonelo njanana ngisindu sabandabatala kanyo old age home na bo ke batinga isa kiuwa inda usishalo
I want to also assure the speaker that inquired about issues of this eh older persons with disabilities that we have covered that very well under section twenty five B one
kwa kona na loa bewa fakamisa ke ubanda kanyeka kwa bandabakubaze kleyo apa ke pasikolo mtetu abandabatala umba wa bandabakubaze kleyo sile ukulu ukonapa ukiweku lomtetu upakitandelo twenty five
lastly Chairperson I want to indicate that we are indeed eh very proactive in our approach we have already developed an integrated plan of action that is going to assist us to work in a proper way with all our key stakeholders and various government departments to make sure that we facilitate the effective implementation of this important piece of legislation
kwa kona sishalo ndiafuna ukuto seskabuze sa ta sa baleka pampi ngelkashala mketu sakwa kwa yo sesina sestwange so soba ma kuza usikwenzisa na njanana manya masibe ukutunseki sa ngofese kuiswa kwa lomtetu no kuti ufese kisu ngokaulese ilaya yokanga kanana wogeke stakeholders ama ama amakandelo abandakanyeka yo kuinga terelewa bandaba abatala na wo akoi na ngale niyese sestwangeso
and I think that was my last point just to assure you that there is an intention of making sure that all key stakeholders contribute their budget their plan and they work together in making sure that we implement this legislation effectively thank you Chairperson
ngakulamdu kubela eloti nasukunuktense suguti ke ongeka ma shlakali esabe sibenzisa na nowo si akuntse kusukutu funa akuntse kusukutaya twandrisa ayayale zoxa tulabu omali loba ke ba bakuntse kusukuti lomtetu ya fese kisuwa engosisla
thank you
plen ni ya bonamos abantu abasnetza yukulalu mi deshumilnesbin bahandil kuba bespatimsile nguthusi atu ba lekri ndisamoyen songe sre kri ndisamoyen ngoku sfigelele eskabeni nasefilweni kodwa onon sishalo bazao sheke la ngemunfabona uba unendo otunbama uwifeze kubo masukutale usanga nenabu bazao abantu abatala bashale pansi bangaku ukwenze la kuzo wanchi swa kakushe ipasile zabo be she li pansi ngoku sfigelele eskabeni nditela ichankliziyo elkwazu kwenza njumtanda zo onfuchane oza ukazba utika umameli kuboba umte keka umameli utiko utini wena yengo masize ichankliziyo abakwazu mangenyam asphakame songe sfigelele sfilweni sishala niswa bona izuela kowe tu ukoleli zono zaloo unga ichobi unga ichobi ngoyo yako ukoyako uzelu fusapo na kuitzaleka neklaku amen
amen
uweke ma
sela se vale amel ekamenlo ise elo nyana nanomo inwele amen desitele kwe swasnema waskuluna sibonga we na lama lesulu ngoba yonke ndo yenzeke ngovuma noktanda kwako asesa ukumake somandos matamshangi sitaluka shanguesi ofiga esita wenzetu sipinde sibona nen abantu beitu sipinde sibwe kli forum sesenga bapili lay konge ogusetena ngikresu ngositu amen ufefe na ngositu Yesu Kristo tandoa te kusena ngero kume songo naparate amen
amen kwaku oza uvuzuwa kutiko we mascale pansi ke bazalibam eh ma kungeye u item number two